Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank our candidate for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting approximately 30 to 40 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to four questions, but that will depend upon the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during the exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or something they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. So, we're gonna get started. Today, we're speaking with Charlie Blitzer, one of the four candidates for the Select Board in the Plymouth Town election. Charlie, thank you so much for joining us today.
Well, thank you so much, Julie, for having me again this year. I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna go right into it. I'm gonna do a little preamble. Many people who responded to our inquiry for questions that they would like the candidates to answer included questions about behavioral integrity of some members of many different boards and committees, and also how and where information is communicated was also a concern that came up. So, question one. The behavior of members of the Select Board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many "debates on multiple topics" have taken place over social media and in venues that are not of an official nature. In 2013, a procedure was established governing the use of official town's social media accounts, as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and any others involved in the town's governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for 2022? And what would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regards to communicating in general, and specifically via social media or other non-sanctioned platforms?
Okay. Well, I don't know. First of all, the information using social media, I think any public official should only put facts out on social media. I don't think opinions should ever be put out as a public official. You know, and I encourage, like, for instance, Chris Bardot is putting out now, he's putting out town information on the website, and it's town information. It's factual, and it's very helpful. The Town Manager's Report, another thing that should be published. I think we should have a dedicated information officer that can get anything, any accomplishments, or any information from town meetings, for instance, the Select Board. He can report on what happened at the Select Board, because a lot of people can't watch it or can't get there. I mean, face-to-face is the best form of communication, and I welcome, I encourage people to come to our Select Board meetings and come face-to-face, because they can ask questions there. But a lot of people can't do that. They're busy, they have other things going on, so I think we need to have, I'd like to have a dedicated site, given just, given facts and information for the residents, so they can see what's going on. They have to know what's going on in town. Saying that again, there were some, I'm not, I'm not one of those members that likes to really go on Facebook, social media, because, you know, I find that if you get on social media, you're gonna, you're gonna have people personally attacking you, and the worst thing you can do is respond to it, because then you get on to their level, and then you, then you give them credibility, let's say it like that. One time, I made the mistake recently, one time calling somebody a name, and somebody quickly corrected me that as a public official, you have to be better than that. And I answered back, "My mistake. It will never happen again." It's the first time it happened, it won't happen again. I get baited. So, that being said, the behavior, well, let's go into the behavior. I can't, personally, I'd like to see rules and regulations for a couple of things. I'd like to see less activity on social media with public officials, I think. But again, that's personally, I'm not involved in it, but in, I don't like to be critical of other officials that are doing it, if that's, if that's the way they want to do it, but they open themselves up to serious criticism, so. But let's go to what we just had recently. We had a committee member, but let's talk about behaviors on committees. All our committees, and we're lucky, we have a lot of committees in Plymouth, and we have great volunteerism in Plymouth, and we have a lot of knowledgeable people, and I'll tell you, we have, these new 55-plus residents are bringing a lot of knowledgeable people into our town, and, and I like that. We're getting some different views, different ideas, and, and they're, and they volunteer on committees and boards, and it's great. It's great for our town. They also, the Council, the Center for Active Living, excuse me, Michelle will get mad at me if I don't call it the right name, and, and they volunteer up there. A lot of the volunteers come from those 55-plus communities. So, those folks, if they, they volunteer as all these committees, and they should be treated respectfully, okay? Also, our public employees that assist them, the administrative assistants that assist those boards, should be treated respectfully. And we just had a situation recently, and I'm not gonna put a name out there, but it was in a public meeting, and we had to remove a person, and I was kind of vocal on that. And afterwards, I was thanked by committee members, by some of the public employees, saying, "Thank you very much for standing up for us." And I said it was the right thing to do. I was actually appalled by somebody's being that, you know, using F-bombs and being disruptive in committees. That's not what it's about.
Was this a committee member or a member of the public?
It was, we had somebody on the conservation. It was in one of my meetings, and we had to remove them. They got complaints. And the sad part about it, this, this went on for years, and the former boards didn't do anything about it. This board's not gonna tolerate it. We will not tolerate that. People should be treated with respect, you know, and, because how, if we let that go, how are we gonna get good people to volunteer? You know, I mean, it's, as an elected official, being treated disrespectfully goes with the job, I guess. You know, people have their opinions, so I don't wanna get into that, but, so, summarizing all what I just said is that I think information, town information on social media is a good thing, if it's about information and facts and not somebody's opinion.
Right. And to your point about having a place for people to go for the factual information. It used to be local newspapers would cover a lot of what went on in board meetings and committee meetings, and what was actually going on in the town, and there's not nearly as much of that anymore. So, people, I think, naturally turn to social media for answers, and it's, it's easy to understand why, if something is said on social media that isn't correct, somebody might wanna correct it.
Right.
But, but that's to your point. If it's officially, if it's official notification from an official town site, those are the facts.
Right, and you'll see that.
Refer to that site.
Chris Bardot does a great job. Chris just changed jobs, so I'm not sure who, whoever his replacement will probably be hopefully doing the same thing, but I would like to see an information officer.
Well, I think that's being talked about, yeah.
We've talked about, yeah.
That's one of the ideas that's.
And I'm supportive, so I'm supportive of that.
Okay, great. Question number two. On April 5th, Select Board Chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the Select Board's March 29th 3-2 approval vote on supporting an RFP, which is a request for proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County Woodlot. He stipulates that, quote, "Since this is just the beginning of a long public process, the Select Board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement, as the presentation by Boston South clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of the development on that land. How do you feel that this entire process has been handled so far, and what are your feelings on the proposed usage of that land?
Okay. I was one of the three votes.
Affirmative.
And how do I feel about this? I feel about it, it got leaked out, and it came before the board too quickly. It was way too, you know, quickly. We should've, they should've had more information before they presented anything to us.
They, meaning?
They, the.
The county?
The county, yeah. The county hadn't even, hadn't even voted on it when it came before us, so it was a real quick presentation by Lauren Tripp, who was represented at this group, and we were asked to vote on moving the process forward. That's, that's the way I took it. And I just wanna start that, that we have had, economic development has been lacking for years, for 10 or 12 years, anyway, there's been no economic development. So, as a Select Board member, I think it's my responsibility, and I think Chairman Quintle does too, we all agreed, well, not, we didn't all agree, but we need to look at any opportunities for economic development. So, we had a developer, and people said to me, "You didn't read the RFP," and I was looking at a developer coming into Plymouth that wants to spend $500 million, and wants to do due diligence on the property, probably at least a three-year study, and they were gonna spend $4 to $6 million on this study, of their own money, by the way. This isn't costing the county or the town of Plymouth any money for them to do this study. So, I said to myself, "We need a lot of information here." And I got questioned, "You didn't read the RFP." I'm looking at economic development, and I wanna see what they're proposing outside of horse racing, you know, I wanna see what other proposals they had, but, so, and we have so much, before anything can go on that woodlot, we have infrastructure there that has to be corrected, has to be fixed. So, that's the information I needed. I wanted them to come back after they, they needed a letter of approval, how I understood it, to go to the state and to go to the feds, okay, to see what they can do to fix the roads at Exit 5. So, I, it's something we couldn't delay a week or two, because it's, it's gonna take months, or maybe a year more to get the information. So, that's why I voted on it. So, the process, people keep bringing up horse racing, horse racing. It's economic development, and do I believe there'll ever be a horse track there? No, no. But there's other things that may be there, that could be a convention center there, which I'm excited about, because we need, convention center would bring tourist dollars, it would help our tourism big time, and, you know, you know, people will come in, spend money in the town, fill up our bed and breakfast, hotels, motels, restaurants, so it probably came, it came too quickly to the public.
So, I think that's, let me ask you a follow-up question on this. A lot of people don't really understand that Plymouth doesn't actually own that land.
No, we don't.
The county owns that land, and that's a huge piece of information that I think some people didn't get. And the fact that the county can do things that the town of Plymouth can't. The county does not answer to the town of Plymouth, the county answers to the state. So, they need permission from the Select Board to move forward with this, but it's the county that brought this forward, not the town of Plymouth.
Right.
I think what surprised people was that it just, all of a sudden, was dropped on people's laps, you know, possibly thoroughbred horse racing, where that had never, ever even been on anybody's radar, I don't think. And that, I believe, just as an observer, I think that is what caused the immediate kind of pushback of, "Wait a minute."
No, no.
"We don't know anything about this."
Like I said in the beginning, it was too quick.
Yeah.
It was really way too quick.
So, the county should've brought that to you much sooner. Should've you also then let the public know that this is, this is something that, one of the many things that the county is looking at? If that was maybe brought months ago?
Yeah. How it should've happened is, well, Chairman Quintle was getting calls. It was, like I said, it was leaked by one of the commissioners, and the reporter was calling Chairman Quintle, and he was getting calls, and, you know, the lack of transparency, like he was doing something behind the public's back, and that's not the case.
Right, right.
That's not the case. So, Chairman Quintle, what he thought was he was doing the right thing. We had that meeting, they came before us, and everybody was allowed to speak.
So, you tried to bring it to the public.
Yeah, well, he brought it to the.
We have to, right?
Because it was, we're being accused again of hiding something from the public, which is not the case. I found out about it, I knew a while back that it was coming, something proposal was coming, and, but I didn't look at, you know, we didn't get the RFP and all that, and there was, there was several RFPs, and six of them were housing, and, but they didn't meet the qualifications of what the county wanted.
Okay.
And I'm gonna tell you, I'd be against that too, on that woodlot right now, until, and you'll hear me later say this, until that infrastructure, the roads are fixed there, I don't wanna see anything there in that woodlot. I don't, because it's too congested right now. And guess what? We have a little city opening up right at Home Depot. There's about 400 units, I believe, and I drove there the other day to see it, just so I could, in my mind, see what was going on up there. There's a lot of homes up there, a lot of apartments up there, and when that opens up, the congestion is gonna be even worse there. So, I'm really concerned about anything going there without infrastructure.
Okay.
So, and what I'm hoping is that the horse race doesn't go through, and they come up with another proposal, that the residents can support, and I will be all for it, because I will not, I will not, and you're gonna hear this several times, because I wanna make clear that I am not for any proposal that the residents don't support, and that's, that's one promise I'm making right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, question number three. Taxes, a single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Development Foundation. All of these issues are tied together, but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This doesn't seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative project-based working group that hones in on one specific project? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments and boards and commissions could be, with a singular goal, an objective, would be a far better use of time and resources, and ultimately, a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? And if so, give me an example of what initiative or program would work using that collaborative approach.
I absolutely agree, working together. I've said that in my last campaign. I wanna get all the boards working together to, for the better of Plymouth and economic growth is really, if I get re-elected, it's one of the first things that I wanna work on. I have a meeting this Friday, actually, with Steve Cole, the Economic Development, the director, executive director, with Lee Hartman, with the town manager, and myself and another selectman are gonna meet and talk about just what you're saying there, about working together, coming up with ideas, and working with all the boards to encourage and invite businesses to come to Plymouth, and make, we wanna make it easier for them to do business here.
Right.
We have to get Town Hall, we have to get the permanent process streamlined, so it's easier for them, but I wanna work together and come up with ideas to do that. So, that's, it's funny, next Friday, we have that meeting.
Okay.
And it's very important.
Yeah. Okay, great. Question four. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government. What do you believe are its current strengths and drawbacks, and do you think it's sustainable, given all the challenges that are facing this town in the coming years?
The current form of government, unfortunately, it's not gonna change, because the chair of commissioners already said they're looking to just tweak the town meeting. I believe town meeting, and I'm not afraid to say this, I was a town meeting member for seven years, we need professional government, we need, we need full-time professional government, whether that's a mayor, I'm not sure, or some kind of city government form of, with city councils that are full-time. There's too much going on in this town, there's too many issues coming up. Just recently, the fire station was an example. We almost were gonna wait another six months. It's already been a year to get that, and every time we delay it, it costs more money. And that's, I'm talking about the man at the fire station that had to get recalled the question to get passed. So, we have too many important issues such as that, that have to get done swiftly, because it's costing us money, something that we have to get fixed, and we have to go through town meeting. But I just think it's, you know, we have volunteers, it's town meeting, it's, you know, volunteer, they're residents, and, you know, some of them, some of them are internet-challenged, and maybe don't have information that they need, but I don't think it's these important issues that having a volunteer legislator, legislative body is working. It's just not quick enough for me, it's not fast enough.
And it's because of the fact that they only meet twice a year, unless they have to call a special.
They meet twice a year, yeah, and too many people have agendas, I mean, there's 135 of them.
Well, now, there's gonna be more.
Now, there's more with the two precincts, so, 160, 18 on the, so what's that, 153?
It's being increased.
Yeah, 18.
Yeah.
Right?
At least 18, right?
Yeah, two more, yeah.
Yeah. So, there's even more.
Two more, yeah, three more.
And those, those new town meeting members aren't, need to be, you know, go through an orientation of what it means to be a town meeting member.
Right.
And I'm pretty amazed when I look at that thick book that they have to look through
Yes.
To familiarize themselves with all the aspects of all the articles, it's daunting. It really is, the amount of information.
And there are some people that read through everything, and they're prepared, they come prepared, and I'll tell you, I can't wait till we're back into in-person, because as a town meeting member, I would go to town meeting and, and I've questioned, because I'd go through it, I'd go to the carcasses, and I'd take notes, but sometimes I would, I would get to town meeting, and whether it was just before or at recess, one of the recesses, I would talk to people who I respected, and I changed my, changed my vote a couple times because of information that I received that day.
Yep.
But I just, I'm not criticizing the town meeting members, I just think, I think we need a, we have a $270 million budget, we have so many issues coming, our growth, you know, we have, the expansion of this town is leaps and bounds, and every year it just keeps going up, and we're gonna, we're really gonna pay attention to that too, how our growth, you know, where it's going.
Right.
And so, we need full-time government, I think, I really believe that.
Now, the people that are really staunch supporters of town meeting-style government, you know, one person, one vote, that everybody has a voice.
Yeah.
And to your point about like the 400 new units that just went in behind Home Depot, that type of thing that's happening in the town. By having a town government that's not town meeting, whether it's a mayor or a city council, whatever it is, would things like that housing project, do you think, go through a whole different process of getting approved? Or would the actual boards and committees still do their due diligence, and just the deciding factor would be, rather than 150 people, it would be maybe 15 or 20?
The problem with that particular, if we're talking about that particular residential, that wasn't town meeting that was the problem. It was, they had, they had such a hard time with some of the boards to get, they were doing commercial, that's commercial space up there, and they had some commercial development there, that they get such a hard time that they said, "We're gonna go 40B." And that's, that should be one of the issues that the citizens are concerned with.
So, talk a little bit more about that.
About the 40B?
Yeah. And why?
Okay, so, this is, this is one of my.
Pet peeves?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we, that I'm, I'm trying to encourage economic development through light industrial development. We need to fill existing commercial space. We need to, we need to invite people, you know, let them know, "This is America's hometown", the businesses, "And this is what we have to offer you," the quality of life, everything for your employees, whatever, whether it's some kind of incentives, tax incentives, whatever, to get commercial development. But we want it, we want it throughout the town, not in just certain areas.
Yeah.
So, we had an existing commercial space up there at Home Depot, commercial develop, doing commercial development where it should be.
Right.
And it got such a hard time, he went 40B, and there's nothing we could do about that. That has to change, that has to change. The same thing happened to Colony Place. There shouldn't be apartments up there. That should be, that should be commercial development up there, because we need the commercial tax, we need that to stabilize our residential tax.
Sure.
And if we keep going the way we're going, and I have an idea of how to do this, if we keep going the way we're going, our taxes, like they have for the last 10 or 12 years, have gone up and up every year, and they get, last year, we had $3 million in growth, economic growth, unacceptable. We lost, we're gonna lose $7 million from Houltec. So, we need to fill, where we already have commercial growth, we need to fill it with commercial development. And what I wanna do, what I propose, and one of the things I'm gonna bring up Friday in my meeting, is I wanna identify ideal land that would be ideal for light industrial commercial development, and I wanna get it rezoned. We have to go through town meeting to do that, get it, get it rezoned as light industrial commercial development. I'm all for preserving open space, but we can't preserve all the, all the open space. We need to leave some for commercial development.
Right.
Because we need to pay for it.
Right. So, based on that, and your commercial development, and you weren't happy that a 40B went in there, where are all the people supposed to live that you want to work here in the town of Plymouth, where it's not very affordable?
That's affordable housing, what is affordable? What is affordable?
Well, is $2,500 a month for a one-bedroom apartment affordable?
It's good, it's, you know, our houses, my wife's a realtor, and let me tell you something, she has all, first time buyers trying to spend $400,000, and they can't find anything.
Anything, right.
So, yeah, it's a problem. It's a problem, so, you know, but we keep, we keep having residential development, but no commercial, and that's why our taxes are going up.
Right. But it doesn't have to be in tandem? I mean, if you want more, which, yeah, obviously, this, this town needs more commercial development, but to, to be able to do that, you need people to be able to work in those, unless the commercial development is something like, some type of a plant or something that is just storage, where you don't have.
Right.
People that have to work there.
Right.
It's just a nice building that, yeah, that gives you a good tax base, but you don't have, you know, 200 people that have to be employed there. So, there's another question, is what type of business do you bring in that can kind of?
Well, that's what, that's what I'm gonna rely on Steve Cole for. Steve is, is like at the top of his, his.
Yeah, he's got a lot of background in economic development, yeah.
He's like the best at what he does in his job, so, and so, we're lucky to have him, so I'm gonna rely on him to, and I know they're working on this, there's already talk of some, some businesses coming to town, and hopefully, we can get that done, so, but he's at the top of his field, excuse me, a little blank there. So, I'm gonna talk to him and rely on him for that, but getting back to, we need all the boards, we need, let's get the businesses here, let's get the planning boards, the zoning boards, let's get everybody in.
Conservation, everybody.
Select Board, conservation, we can work together. We can have environmental, you know, taking, you know, taking care of, we have the sustainable coordinator that we're gonna, that we're hiring. We'll be able to work with the boards too. But we can work together. We can have conservation and preserve open space at the same time have economic developments.
Right, exactly.
We can work together, so.
Exactly.
That's how it should be.
I agree, okay. So, we have about 10 minutes left of your 40, you can talk about anything you want, or anything we haven't talked about. Any subject you wanna bring up? Or why you think that you should be elected? There's four people running for two spots. And why should you be one of the two people?
Well, at the, my first eight months, it was really, it was eye-opening, there was a lot of issues, a lot of things. And I think, I think the board, I think we accomplished a couple things that I'm very proud of. First of all, we, we stabilized the town employees, the contracts. We did it swiftly, with respect, and that's not according to what they, they all told me, the unions said, "It's never, it's never been like this." It hasn't been like this for years. So, we, we got it done, I had, at town meeting, the, the human resource director said, thanked me for getting it done swiftly and efficiently, and, and having the courage to do it. And I told her at that meeting, "It wasn't courageous, it was the right thing to do." We looked at the pay, the pay scale of other towns and what our town workers were making. And we found out that, and I knew it because it's one of the reasons I was running. Because for years, I'd have police, fire, DPW people telling me, you know, "You gotta run, you gotta run." You know, I'm a union person myself, and I understand that we work for less money for, for the benefits, okay? And we get some great town workers, we, it's, they're the backbone of our community. So, we identified, we did the, checked the pay scale of other towns, and, and they were way underpaid. And that's the reason why we have 50 openings right now, because people have left for other jobs. So, with this new, these new contracts, we're gonna retain employees. And we're not gonna be a training ground for other, for other towns. And every time we lose somebody, especially police and fire, it costs us a lot of money to retrain them.
Sure.
Okay? Yeah. So, that, I'm proud of that fact that we got that done, and, and the other thing is, we got, we, we had to replace the town manager. And that, that was a controversy, and we were accused of not being transparent, and, which is not the case. A lot of it was executive session things that we couldn't talk about. And we, we were getting, there's a group of people that would come to all the meetings by Zoom, and would, would just, just would criticize us. And, I'm not gonna get into their reasons for that, but, from, from day one, it was like that. And the story is that the town manager came to Chairman Quintle before I was on the board, and, months before, and wanted to, to exit. And they worked on it to, to have her exit without costing the town a ton of money. I've known Melissa 17 years, I have a lot of, I was very friendly with her, and I liked her, and I still like her as a person, and I just, the last few years, I just thought it, it was time, it was time to, to make a move. Well, she came to, before I got on the board, and she wanted to leave. So, we worked out a deal, and she was very involved, and her and her attorney really worked the deal out. And we okayed it. And we, we, out of respect for her 17 years, she got a great exit package. I'm not sure if it's as good as the superintendent of schools got, but it was a pretty fair, pretty fair, and she deserved it. 17 years of service, she deserved it. But we get accused and criticized, and, and not being transparent, and, and a lot of things happened. And, that we don't talk about, because I don't wanna embarrass anybody, so. But, she was treated fairly on her way out the door. She really was. Very respectfully, and, and the, the negotiation went very respectful with her. So, I was proud of that. And, and also, I'm very proud of the new town manager that we hired.
Derek.
Yep, and that's, that's, that's one of our second great accomplishments, is hiring Derek Brandisi. He's a breath of fresh air. When everybody gets to meet him and talk to him, he's, he listens, he's got some great ideas, he's gonna help with the economic developments, and I'm looking forward, because that's something we need. And, and one thing about Derek, and I didn't know him before.
Yeah, because he, he did work for the town before.
Yeah, but I didn't know him before that, and, I'm gonna tell you what. He's a man of action, he, he came, he hit the ground running when he came to town. He really did. And, let me tell you, he's, you talk about, you know, he's got a new fire chief, a new police chief. The most tragic thing Pearl says, a clerk who, I could spend the next.
I know.
Hour talking about, and I didn't know her that well before, but what she did in her short time as clerk.
Yeah.
Doing that redistricting, about 12 different.
Right.
You know, doing that, and taking charge, Larry retired just before the elections.
Yeah.
And she did an amazing job, and her staff, it was great to see. I can tell you how good a person Pearl is, just talk to her staff.
Right.
Just talk to them, and I have, and they loved her.
Yeah.
And everybody in town loved her, and it was a good send-off. So, Derek's had, you know, he's, you're talking about getting his feet wet quick.
Yep.
So, you know, he's done that, so, but.
So, you're, you're confident that things are on the right track?
We're moving in the right track, and you know something, my thing is, we're, we're trying to fix some problems, and I just wanna move forward.
Yep.
And my thing is, if you hear to complain, go somewhere else. When, when I would talk to somebody, if you get some ideas to improve things, I don't have all the answers, but you can call, my number's out there, my email, call me anytime with ideas. Let's, let's fix problems and not create problems.
Right.
I, I really, I really believe that, so. But I'd like to, if I could.
Go right ahead, sure, of course you can.
We only have a couple minutes left. Just read something, I, I, I wrote this down because I wanna clarify something, so. "I wanna thank PAC TV and Julie Dorfson for, for the time here, it's, I really appreciate this forum. And to the residents of Plymouth for your questions concerning our community. I've heard from residents that change is needed, but the opposite of change is returning to the same. I am committed to moving Plymouth forward, voting on issues with informed conviction, listening to our residents, and always being open to new ideas and discussion. That being said, I wanna clarify something. I will never vote yes for any proposal for development brought before the select board that do not have the support of residents. I have said this on record at a couple meetings, I've said it on my page, but allow me to, to be clear. I will not support a horse track in any form here in Plymouth." People, I want people to hear that, so. "I support exploring new sources of commercial tax revenue for our town through collabora, collaboration with others to develop an economic growth and development strategy that will positively contribute to the identity of our community. Several new small businesses have chosen Plymouth to be their home, not just in the downtown and waterfront area, but in Cedarville, Manomet, Redbrook, Pine Hills, West Plymouth, and North Plymouth. These entrepreneurs recognize the value of operating in Plymouth. We are America's hometown, and it is time we remind the outside businesses, business community, and commercial developers of the importance, importance of that fact. I am committed to finding ways to incentivize the use of existing commercial space, identifying ideal land for commercial development, preserving open space, and reorganizing the onboarding process for new business in town. That is the change I have represented over the past eight months, and will continue to represent when I am reelected. I am dedicated to service and committed to helping Plymouth continue to, to be the place we all love. I'm not a politician. My only interest is that of the town of Plymouth and my fellow residents. I'm not asking to be reelected because it's a stepping stone to higher office. I am asking for your renewed vote of confidence on May 21st, so together we can continue making the difficult decisions needed to position Plymouth for continued growth and success."
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie, for participating in this interview, and we wish you the best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. Today, we're speaking with Ed Bradley, one of the four candidates for select board in the town of Plymouth. Ed, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for inviting me.
All right. We're gonna dive right in.
Okay.
To the first question.
Sure.
And I wanna pre, I wanna do a preamble on this first question. Many people who responded to our inquiry for questions, that would like to have their candidates answer, included questions about behavioral integrity of some members of many different boards and committees. How and where information is communicated was also a big concern that was brought up. So, question number one. The behavior of members of the select board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many, quote, "debates on multiple topics have taken place over social media and in venues that are not of an official nature. In 2013, a procedure was established governing the use of official town social media accounts, as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and any others involved in towns' governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for 2022? And what would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regards to communication in general, and specifically via social medium on other non-sanctioned platforms?" And I know that's a mouthful, so if you need me to repeat any of it, I will.
Well, first of all, to start off, social media is, is becoming more and more used, and a lot of people like to try to get their information that way. Unfortunately, a lot of it is not official, and a lot of it is skewed, and a lot of it is, is not, is false. I believe there probably is a time to update that policy, only because social media has become so big. You know, and it's not just Facebook, it's Instagram, and, and the, and the whole slew of them. It, it is, like I said, a lot of people's choice to try to get their news, and you don't get printed newspapers anymore. And it, you know, you're trying to find out what happened last night at the selectman's meeting. And it, the quick way is sometimes on social media. The individual pages that, that kind of follow along and try to get out the information, they're tougher because it's, it's that one person's perception. Three of us could be in this room right now and talk about a certain subject. And three of us can walk out of that room and have a totally different outcome of, of what they thought happened.
Absolutely.
I've seen that happen at town meeting time and time again. You, you, you wonder, "Was I even in the same room?" So, it's difficult when they're, when you're using those individual pages. So, the, yes, there needs to be an official page, and they probably should have some direction from the group as a whole, or whoever was participating that night, on, on what should be on that page. Sometimes it can be as easy as the minutes, but written minutes miss a lot of things that go on.
Right.
And, and of course, they, they don't get the facial expressions, and you don't get to see, or hear the voice inflexes, things like that. So, you miss a lot of, of what's going on. So, yeah, it, it needs to be updated a little bit, and probably, I wouldn't say training, but there's gotta be people out there that are really good at this, and there are. Because they actually produce news this way now. They can give pointers and tips, just to kind of help people out. Things like what to stay away from. Because you can get into trouble, even if things aren't morally bad or ethically bad, there are things that you can step on that can cause a lot of problems.
Right.
And get a lot of people riled up.
Right.
And that's the last thing you wanna do, especially nowadays. I mean, there seems to be enough people upset about a slew of things, from whether federal, state, and local level.
Right.
It spills down to us, we, whatever you see happening on the federal level, the state level, eventually you start seeing at the local level. So, there is, you know, a need to kind of give them some pointers, give everybody some pointers, myself included. I mean, we used it a little bit, obviously, but not, not to the extent that needs to be done. Because communications as a whole around town, and you hear this all the time from, from people, you know, especially people my age and older. It, it's tougher for them, because they don't, they're not as quick and as savvy, and they're probably not gonna carry a phone that, that has instant access to the internet. So, they're, they have a problem trying to catch up with some of the information. And as well as, you know, doing business with the town.
Right.
You know, we do a lot of permits online and things.
Yes.
But there are plenty of people that call the office and would say that, "I don't own a computer."
Right.
And, or, or where I live doesn't have good, good enough internet access so that I can, you know, follow along the pages and get them filled out in a timely manner.
Sure.
So, those, those are some of the issues. I mean, the Council on Aging obviously does a great job with that.
Yes.
Because they're over there and willing to help, and, and they have that, that technology right now.
Yeah. And to that point, I know Michelle Braddy uses a number of different venues or, or ways and platforms to get out information. She makes robocalls, they have a newsletter, they have emails, they, they have a bunch of different ways to do it.
Yes.
So, given the town has such a variety of people and ages.
Yeah.
When the select board, and, the select board covers so many things, so many topics come before the select board. It, it absolutely astounds me the amount of knowledge that a select board person has to, well, you can't know on day one, but you, you eventually have to be up to speed on.
Yes.
So, how do you translate everything that might have happened in a, in a two, three, four-hour meeting, so that people that aren't gonna watch the meetings, and you don't want them to get it from their buddies or their friends on social media? What, what is a good way, the select board that can, can communicate, "This is what happened last night. This is why, and these are the next steps."
And I think that's why they need a, a communications person, or a PR person, or, or a firm.
Okay.
But, you know, it's probably good for the town to have one anyway, because they could be running these social media sites, as well as helping the select board at the end of a meeting, capture what happened, what went on, in, in a logical way, so that people can follow along what went hap, what went on.
Yeah.
And, you know, using terms that, sometimes we use, use a lot of terms that people wouldn't understand.
Right.
Or abbreviations. And someone like that can help them with that, so that when they, when they're reading the story, they, they fully understand what's going on.
Right.
And then they could, obviously, can ask questions.
Yep. Now, do you think that board members are treated unfairly by the public?
Well, social media makes it much easier for that to happen, absolutely. You know, you can always disagree with what goes on, and I can remember my father being a town meeting member back in, in the mid-'60s. And people would disagree, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't call his family a name.
Right.
And that, that's what happens on social media.
Yeah.
You know, they, they're hiding behind the keyboard, and they want to, they're so mad, and so upset that they attack not just the, the ideas, or the, the ideas in the person, but then also his family.
Right.
And that just, it isn't, isn't fair at all.
No, no.
And, and they can't fight back.
Right, right. Okay, excellent. Let's go to question number two. "On April 5th, select board chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the select board's March 29th, 3-2 approval vote on supporting an RFP, which is a request for proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC, to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County Woodlot. Mr. Quintle stipulated, and I will quote, "That since this is just the beginning of a long public process, that the select board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement. As the presentation by Boston South clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of the development on that land. How do you feel this entire process has been handled so far? And what are your feelings on this proposed usage of the land?
You know, I, I hate to criticize the sitting board, because I don't, I didn't, I wasn't under the same pressures and saw the same things, or had the same experiences they had. But I think that this was something that was brought on by the county, and the county commissioners. And although, I, I understand, select man Quintle, he wanted to make, wanted to be as transparent as possible, and get the information out there as quickly as possible. This may have been a time that you partnered up with the, with the county commissioners, and said, "Listen, this is your idea. You need to get that out there." Because a lot of people watched that meeting that night and thought it was the town board of select board that made that decision and want this to work, and that, that's not at all the case, and this is. As far as thoroughbred racing, if that was the only use, I would be against it. And probably be against it even if it included some form of thoroughbred racing, unless the other pieces that were there were so great, and would produce so much tax income that it would, it would make sense to try to do it. But I think this, the company, Boston South, is gonna be doing a lot of investigative work, obviously, to see if this is gonna be a worthy adventure for them. And, one of the things that they're looking at is, how do we get infrastructure to that site, without making things much worse on Exit 5, and, well, the old Exit 5, and Long Pond Road.
Right.
And, so they're gonna be doing some, talking with state and federal officials. And they're gonna be looking to see if there is some part of money or some grants that might be available that would help them bring infrastructure to that site. And I think it's similar to what you might have seen, what the city of Worcester did when they brought in the Wusocks. They had $20 million of infrastructure money in order to improve that area, so that the people, you know, the, the expected crowds could be. so that the people, you know, the expected crowds could be able to travel.
Right.
They may be able to find something similar to that, too. Now, in the very end of it all, they may decide, this isn't for us, and it isn't something that's going to work.
Right.
But the town will, and the county will have gleaned some information and some good information for the next person that comes along or the next proposal that comes along. That 106 acres is owned by the county, and they are going to do something with it.
So let's talk about that for a second, because I think that's really confusing to people.
Yes.
So it's land smack dab in the middle of Plymouth, but Plymouth doesn't own it. Plymouth County owns it.
Right.
Do you know how that came about, that the county happens to own that land? And I know they own other parcels of land?
Yes, and that particular one was gifted to the county, I believe it was back in 1907. And the reason they called it the County Woodlot was it was back, that back then for people to be able to use to go and harvest trees for cooking, heating their homes, especially people that may not be able to afford to do it on their own.
Yep.
And it evolved, obviously, into other things over the years. But the county has always owned a lot of land in Plymouth because we were one of the county seats, the two, the other one being Brockton. And it seems like, you know, there's been a feud going on for 200 years between the county of Plymouth and the town of Plymouth.
Right.
And a lot of it has to do with the land. You know, the town wants them to do certain things with it, and the county feels like the town's always pressuring them into doing things.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a communication and more of a, you know, a friendly bond that needs to happen there between those two.
Right.
But they, they need money, they need funding, and they see this as one of the ways to bring some county funds in. And even if they were sold, it, somebody is going to do something with that 106 acres.
Right. So I guess that's the question. If Plymouth owned that land, a lot of things would have to happen. They would have to go through planning and the ZBA and the select board, and a whole bunch of people would have to have eyes on before it was determined whether or not something would be approved to be built or put on that land. But would the county, they, they can kind of determine what they want on the land, can they not?
Well, that's an argument that the county is probably going to bring up on this particular proposal and has brought up on that land, the wooded woodlot before in the past, that because they're county government, they don't have to conform to the local zoning.
Because they answer to the state, correct?
Yeah, that's what they're going to say. Now, when you look at any of the court cases that have involved that type of land use, whether it be not so much state but county and local, if it was for county use, in other words, if they were going to build a courthouse there, definitely for county use.
Yep.
Then, yes, they would.
They could just do it. Yep, they could just go ahead and do it.
That's not what they're doing here. Their claim is that it is for county use because the county needs the funds in order to continue operating. So that's, I think that's outside, and I think, you know, there will be some kind of a decision made on that, whether it's in court or through, you know, attorneys. That, and it will probably end up, I'm sure it will end up, and I hope it'll end up being under the town control. And that way then, you know, the zoning that needs to be changed will have to go to town meeting and be voted on, and there'll be a lot more input on it at that point in time.
Okay. And there's going to be a non-binding question on the ballot.
Yes.
About whether or not the residents would support a thoroughbred racing on that particular lot of land. How do you, how do you feel about that? What do you think the outcome of that's going to be?
If that's the way it's worded, my own thought is I would vote no. And only because there are so many other parts and so many other things that could go on there.
Yeah.
But show us the final or close proposal. Show us how many millions, hopefully, of dollars the town will get in taxes every year. And show us that it, there's going to be some good paying jobs that will, you know, attract and help people that live in town and attract people to, you know, to come to work there. And then let us make a decision on that. You know, as Selectman Quintle said, it is very early. But we, you know, in order to make a really good decision, you've got to see a little bit more of that. But worded is that in my favor of racetrack, no. You know, and just, this is probably a good time to say this. During these candidate interviews lots of times, the best way for people out there in the town to know what we're thinking, each individual candidate, is to ask questions like this. But, you know, I want to be clear that if I'm elected, I would have been elected to represent the people of Plymouth.
Right.
And whether or not I thought that was a good idea, if I'm hearing from people and they say, no, this is what we want to do, or I'm in favor of something, they say, no, this is something we do not want to do, then that's the way I would have to vote.
Okay, the will of the people.
Yes.
Okay, all righty. Let's go on to question number three. Taxes. A single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Development Foundation. All of these issues are tied together but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This does not seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative project based, like a project-based work group that hones in on a specific project and works together? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments, boards, and committees with a singular goal and objective would be a far better use of time and resources and ultimately a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? And if so, could you give me an example of what initiative might work using this method?
I have seen the number of committees that the town has, and it's higher than most cities and towns have. But it's because we're in an old Yankee town, and we want to try to get as many people involved as we possibly can.
Yep.
And as you've seen over local elections in the recent years, the participation is down. So even though we still have this large number of committees, I think the last time I looked it was around 75 or so, very many of, a lot of them have the same members that are served a multiple committee. So you're really not getting that, that full benefit from everybody that you're trying to get involved. And as a result of having so many of them, you're correct, there are some points in time where one actually counteracts the other.
Right.
And that's not good.
Right.
For the town in the end.
Sure.
So we, maybe there's a way of putting together a hierarchy of boards, you know, similar to like what Tom Mean did with the Committee of Presing Chairs. Have some committee that's in charge or a board, excuse me, would be a committee that would be in charge of some of these committees that could help guide them along and keep them all informed. Because they meet at different times.
Right.
And I'm sure that where they're volunteers, the people that are on one committee are probably not going to the other two or three committee meetings that week or that month either.
Sure.
So they don't get a lot of that, that direct information or get to see exactly what went on, what the conversation was there.
Right.
We do need to have more of a collaboration there so that we can, we can get business to come into town.
Right.
Because that's, that's one of the issues that kind of chases people away or scares them away, business people from town. And why we only have, you know, 12% of that tax is coming in, it's industrial and commercial.
So talk about that. Why is it, why is it so difficult for businesses to come into our town?
They see the number of hurdles that they have to go through before they even get to, you know, like the fire department or the building permission to get permits. You know, recently, you probably saw that there was a development that, I mean, a commercial project going on right off the highway. And then it was a local person, he's lived in town, and his family's lived in town, had zoning permits and was moving along with it. And it was, the zoning board called them back in. And there was a, it went on for two meetings, and there was a possibility that the zoning permits, you know, were going to be denied, even though they were already issued. When other business owners see things like that happening and see it happening to somebody who lived in town and grew up in town and parents lived in town.
Yeah.
That scares them. And they, you know, they wonder, well, time is money today.
Right.
Especially with, you know, interest rates being low, and you know that's going to change. They don't want to come in here and have to spend three years or two years trying to get to the point where they can apply for a building permit. They want to know ahead of time, can this be done? And can it be done quickly so that I don't find myself suddenly, you know, the loan costing me much more money? And of course, you know, labor costs and everything have gone up right now, the way things happen, just because of, you know, the COVID and the supply chain.
Right.
So they want it to happen faster because to them, as I said, time is money.
Right.
And it, we kind of slow them down, unfortunately, and that's, that's a perception that's out there.
Yeah.
And I think it can be, it can be repaired. I know it can be repaired.
Yep.
And we definitely need to get some more of the good, you know, industrial and commercial business in town so that we can start getting, we can get to the point where more of the burden is on that side. And then you may even be able to look at splitting the rate at that point.
Let's talk about that for a second. So the way it is right now, everybody pays the same tax rate, whether you're an individual or whether you're a business. I know when this came up before the select board, oh, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago, there was a passionate plea by the local small business owners to say, please don't do this to us. You know, we are barely making it. It was, I think it was during the pandemic, and they, clearly they had a point. Is there such a thing, or could there be such a thing as having a personal rate, a small business rate, and then a commercial rate? So that you form a criteria of people that would fall under a small business so that they don't have to pay the commercial rate even though they are considered commercial?
I haven't seen a model like that, and I guess that would be an answer for an attorney or to study the law a little bit. I've seen either, you know, the commercial rate and the residential rate. So I don't know if that's, that's possible. Obviously, if that was possible, that would definitely help out because you've got the businesses downtown that are, you know, they're hurting after the pandemic. But they're families, they're local families, and they employ people in town.
Right.
That you don't want to hurt. But, you know, yet you have other businesses that do very well. And when you look at the, you know, the amount of taxes they pay compared to someone with a very large home, it doesn't seem like it's fair.
Right.
To the people.
Right.
Especially to the residential taxpayer.
Sure, it doesn't seem to be equitable. And let's talk just for a minute, since you brought up the tax base of commercial tax and bringing businesses in. What kind of businesses can we attract to come into Plymouth that won't be controversial?
Well, I think anytime there's business coming into Plymouth, there's going to be some controversy, especially where it's going to be.
Okay.
But major controversy, you know, I think that a lot of retail has gone by the way at this point.
Yeah.
Especially during the pandemic, everybody got easy, found it so easy to purchase online. And, you know, larger stores found that brick and mortar infrastructure is very expensive.
Yeah.
So, and take, for example, you know, at the shops at Five Way, there are a lot of empty spaces there.
Right.
That will probably have trouble filling. And as I said, as the retail goes away, you see the mall in Hanover and the one in Kingston where they, they take down the stores and they're building residential units there.
They're reinventing what they are.
Yes. Some of the specialty shops will work. But look at, go one, you know, street over from shops at Five, you go Camelot Drive. Now, those are good businesses, and they employ people that make a good living, and they're thriving down there. So it's that type of business that we need to bring in that isn't going to leave an empty, build a huge box store and then leave it empty, you know, in five years because it didn't turn the profit that they thought it was going to.
Right, right.
Where you got local families working and they're making a good wage. And that's, I think, you know, what we need. And they don't seem to be as controversial because it's the people in town.
Right. Now, how much of the purview of the select board is all of this? Is the tax rate, is the zoning, is the, what kind of businesses we're going to bring in? I think a lot of people think that the select board is kind of the be-all and end-all as far as you're kind of the rubber stamp of, you're the, the part of the town government that's probably the most important border committee in terms of what you can affect for the town. Is that true? Or what is your perception of what exactly the select board should and does do?
I think that they can give a lot of guidance and help the other boards see other sides to different arguments that they have going on. As far as zoning goes, no, they don't, the select board isn't going to have any control over that.
Right.
But they could go to town meeting and recommend some changes and, you know, lobby to get those changes done. But that, that's different, that's outside of theirs. As far as setting the tax rate, that happens every year. The board of selectmen has to do that, whether or not it's going to be split or a single tax rate. That does come up, and that's been in their purview. But how much you pay really isn't in their purview. That's depending upon the worth of your home. And of course, because of all the sales and the lack of home supply in the area, the prices have gone up, they've gone up crazy. So people that have lived in their home for years and haven't done anything to improve it, suddenly you're seeing the worth of their home jump up, you know, $40, $50,000, and the tax amount do along with it.
Right.
So it's, it boggles their minds, and it doesn't seem fair, but that's just how the system works.
Right, right, okay. Fourth question. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government. What do you believe are its current strengths and drawbacks? And do you think it's sustainable, given all the challenges that it's facing this town in the coming years?
I'm not, I don't think it will be sustainable much longer. You know, we have to be able to act faster. And town meeting, meeting twice a year isn't always being able to act fast enough. I can remember when we, when we knew that the North Plymouth Fire Station was going to have to be replaced, and it didn't have enough land there to do anything with it was. And we were, the town manager and I were out looking for land, parcels of land. And of course, that area of town, there isn't a whole lot of it, and what goes up for sale goes very quickly.
Yeah.
And we found that to be a problem. So much so that, you know, we'd look at a couple of good pieces that would fit in, and, you know, within a couple of months or a couple of weeks, we'd get a call saying we've got an offer on it.
Yeah.
And we can't act that fast.
Right.
We finally did go to town meeting and asked for $25,000 so that we could actually put a down payment on. But we still couldn't act and actually make the purchase until the next round of town meeting.
Right.
And, you know, some people will say, well, maybe town meeting needs to meet more often. I can tell you right now, you couldn't squeeze another one in. The, the way we have our timeline set up from, you know, when you have to show up at town meeting, you're not backing that up when the books have to be done, when the meetings have to happen, the finance committee and selectmen, you won't be able to squeeze a third one in. It's not to say you can't have special town meetings.
Right.
You know, that's always the argument, we can call for one anytime. But they're expensive.
Yeah.
And you're, you know, I don't know if you're going to get as well attendance on a special as, you know, especially if it's for one or two particular items.
And you need a quorum.
Yeah, that's right.
Or it doesn't.
Or it doesn't go through.
No good, yeah, right.
And we don't know if we're going to be able to use hybrid. That's still something that's kind of hanging out there, you know, at the legislature, whether or not that law will get passed. So if they're not going to show up in wherever the meeting's called for, then it's not going to happen.
Right.
Now, the strengths of what we have is you get a lot of participation. You know, even when we were doing the Zoom town meetings, you get to hear from people that see things completely different from what I saw it. And you sit and you say, you know, there's some valid points to that, and you just don't, don't get that. So you're getting some input from all over town, which is another part, too.
Right.
You know, we're getting it from the people in Cedarville as well as North Plymouth. And at least the, people have to listen to them and understand what their concerns are about it. And, but it just can't act quick enough. And I think that's going to be more important going forwards. There is going to be times when we're going to have to, you know, be able to fund something quickly without having to call for a special time meeting or waiting for the next one. And that, that's, it almost isn't possible at this point.
So if I'm hearing you right, the major reason why town meeting might have to go way down the road is strictly financial, because we can't make decisions fast enough for things that need to be done?
Right, yeah, you know, we put, we have to have our budget in by October. That's going to be voted on in the next April.
Yeah.
And we don't even get the money and start using it until July.
Right.
So we're doing a lot of guessing.
Yes.
And, you know, last thing you want to do is have to come back.
Right.
And ask for more money because you guessed using an estimate today, and this is more important today than it's ever been.
Yeah.
Because escalation of prices is crazy.
Right.
So you're trying to estimate so that you do have enough money.
Right.
And we may not, it may be more than you need at the end. Of course, it gets returned, but it's still, you know, people voted on, you know, voted on it and see a large expenditure happen, especially for capital items, and they don't see that later on it gets turned back in and it becomes free cash.
Right.
If we were able to, to act more quickly, we would be getting pricing that was current and right to the, right to the point. You saw that at the last town meeting, there were some projects that had a 10% escalation. Some had a 20%.
Yep.
There was even one that had a 30% because they are going out so far. And they're asking for money now for things that are going to happen three years from now. At that point, that's just a wild guess.
Right. So aside from the financial end of a town meeting being inefficient only because of how infrequently they meet, is there any other concerns you have about right now how town meeting affects the future planning of Plymouth?
Well, I think, you know, this election coming up, all town meeting members are going to be running for reelection because we're going to have three new precincts.
Yep.
Last I saw, not every one of those seats had any, had someone signed up to run.
Right.
So there'll be a lot of write-in votes. And whether or not those people that get written in want the job when they're asked, you know, it could be for your neighbor's society, you're a good person to write your name, and you say, listen, I don't want any part of that.
Right.
So we don't, you're going to have a lot of new people and a lot, and they're going to have to learn that, you know, what goes on and what your role is. And we had to go get the information so that you can make the correct vote or the vote that you want to make.
Right.
And it's going to be tougher, you know, with that many people now. And now one hundred and sixty eight, your quorum's going to be higher. And if we have a lot of people that didn't even prepare nomination papers but get elected as town meeting members, I I don't, it it's worrisome as to how much time and effort that they they really want to put into it.
Right. And to just circle back to the the first thing we talked about was communication, too. There's so much that town meeting members really, if you look at the book, if you look at the everything that was covered like in the last town meeting, you've got to know an awful lot. If you're really going to make an educated vote on anything, you need to know a lot, just like the select board needs to know a lot. Are we even set up communication-wise to, during the year, make sure that town meeting members are kept up to speed on all these things that will end up being voted on at the next town meeting?
That's something that doesn't happen, and even a lot of the town meeting members will tell you that. They get their book for town meeting. And, you know, it's like you said, it's pretty thick. And there were a couple of times this last time meeting where the questions were asked, and it was in the book. We had supplied the information, but there's so much information, it's volatileness. I don't, I don't blame someone for missing something and having to have it pointed out to them. And you're getting it so close to, you know, town meeting that you don't have a lot of time on. And everybody now is working. Dude, both people, both parents are working. You know, I don't know where they find the time to be able to to study all that.
And these are all volunteer positions.
And they're all volunteer. And lots of times you'll hear, well, you know, you can go to the finance committee or watch the finance committee meetings and get some information. You can watch the selectman. They don't always have that time to be able to do that.
To do that.
So it's it's tough getting that information out to all of them in 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 a form that doesn't look like it's so bulky that after I go through the first hundred pages, I I just can't go any further.
And and you need to get it in in chunks as it goes along instead of all at once. People can't remember that, right, okay. We have about seven, seven and a half minutes left. So is there anything that we talked about that you want to go back to? Or is there anything that we didn't talk about that you want to bring up?
Not that I can think of offhand. I mean, there's so many things, but.
Right, well, what is what is a passion project of yours? What is something that you really would like to dig your your teeth into?
I, again, there's so many of those, too. You know, our infrastructure around town has gotten pretty bad over the years. And that's not uncommon, especially in the Northeast, you know, for your municipal buildings to get into disrepair. Because when when times are tough and money has to be cut, they always look at one of those things. Well, you know, instead of putting a million dollars in there for, you know, building maintenance, let's only put five hundred thousand. And it then it snowballs. You know, we're aware of it now, the town is, I think everybody is, and they see the big expenditures. And now we have to keep that up, keep those up. But I think we're on a good road as far as pavement management program that that the DPW has. Because probably the biggest complaints you get from people are the roads and the condition of the roads.
And that's every town.
It is, yeah. So if you can do a really good job there in your bridges and things like that, and so that it's safe and that they're, you know, good, good road beds that, you know, that people don't mind driving on it, and they don't want to get their cars ruined. You make, you know, you gain a lot, you may not gain a lot of friends, but you're going to lessen the amount of
Enemies.
Enemies, yeah.
Right, right, absolutely.
And sometimes that's that's what you kind of have to look at, you know. Because a lot of people, they'll see the amount of money that's being spent on pavement management, and they think that's that's exorbitant. But yet, you know, we got to keep the roads up. And we have, you know, an awful lot of miles of roads compared to other towns.
Oh, boy.
Our biggest Achilles' heel in Plymouth is just our size. Any other town, you know, wouldn't need seven fire stations, wouldn't have two hundred miles of road, wouldn't have two hundred miles of unpaved road. And it's it's just, it's costly for them, for us to keep up.
Right, our size is costly.
We just, you know, and most of our our building now is residential that's going on. And with those come schoolchildren. And the the taxes that those properties bring in doesn't equal what we're paying out to educate their children. And we we need to educate children. It's it's, you know, that's one of our top priorities.
Lots of work to do.
Yes.
So there's four people running for two positions. So if you could just look in that camera and tell people why they should vote for Ed Bradley.
Well, I think after working for the town for forty seven years and in the last fourteen years and four months, being a department head and managing a budget and going through all these committees and boards in order to set a budget and watching other departments doing the same thing, I have some some knowledge of what's going on and what has been going on that is useful. I'm not just going to be, you know, the new selectman off the street that doesn't doesn't understand what's going on. I I live in town, my whole family lives in town. As a matter of fact, you know, my brothers and sisters and their spouses, my two sons and their wives and my eight grandchildren live in town. And they all work in town. So everything that happens in town, you know, affects my family, my immediate family directly. So I have a keen awareness of of that as as well. I I think I bring some some skill sets that others won't. I also think that I have some experiences that others haven't had. And it, I'm not someone that's run for office before. I'm not a politician at all. I just, one of those, my job has been to get things done and keep people safe. And that's what I want to continue to do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. We'd like to thank Ed Bradley for participating. It's been wonderful. We wish you best of luck throughout your campaign and in the election. Today, we're speaking with Alan Costello, one of the four candidates for select board in the Plymouth Town Election. Alan, thank you so much for joining us today.
Julie, thank you for having me. I really thank PAC TV for inviting me to this forum. Thank you.
Excellent, okay. We're going to get right into this for the questions.
Sure.
I will preamble. The behavior of some members of the select board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many debates on multiple topics have taken place over social media and in venues that are not of an official nature. In two thousand and thirteen, a procedure was established by the town governing the use of official town's social media accounts as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and any others involved with the town's governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for two thousand and twenty-two? And what would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regard to communicating in general and specifically via social media or other non-sanctioned platforms?
It's a good question, Julie. I, there's no doubt about it that the most effective way to get your message out now when you're running for any type of office in town is social media. But social media is still a little bit like the wild, wild west. And it's a double-edged sword where you can use it to get your message out to constituents. And the vast majority of the time, that's that's how it's used and it's used effectively. It scares me. I'm not social media savvy. And if you wander onto social media and you don't know exactly what you're talking about, you really could be in for a tough afternoon. People are sharp, people are smart, and people are paying attention. And like no other medium, social media is 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 the is the way people are now communicating to their elected officials. There's been some dust-ups, there's no doubt about it, over the last couple of years. Some of it is a little bit of cause for concern because it gets, it goes too far. Some of it sort of goes away in a day or two, and it's it's good when that happens.
So just to follow up on that, yes, social media is is used a lot. And and it really, it's it's not a sanctioned, unless it's the town's social media page. It's not supposed to be a sanctioned way to communicate. But that begs the question, what is the best way for boards, committees, the town itself to to communicate to the public on a regular basis what's going on? Because frankly, a lot of people don't have time to watch all the boards and committee meetings. And we don't have a lot of reporting from newspapers anymore, which used to kind of fill in that gap. So.
No, you're right. It is the it is the way that most people get their information. I, when I was with the Committee of Precinct Chairs, the chairman, I had always wanted to, and others did as well, to have a dedicated Facebook page just for the community, Committee of Precinct Chairs. And I would suggest that you could probably do that with all the major committees. Have their own individual Facebook pages that they maintained or their their clerk maintained, their their chairman, assistant chairman, vice chairman. That seems to be the best way, I would think, in the future to get information out. I know the town has a website, and it's and it's a very good website. It's it's sometimes difficult to navigate. And once you figure out a few places you want to go, the information is there. But you have to spend some time and look, look for it.
Looking for it, yeah, right.
A Facebook page, as you know, you sit in the doctor's office, waiting room. You're on the Facebook page. You're driving in traffic, you're sitting on the couch in the evening. It's so accessible that and like you said, the 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 newspaper is sort of gone by the wayside. It's unfortunate, but it really has. Our local paper does a good job, but you can tell the the content is secondary, it's a little fluff.
Not as hyper-local as it used to be.
It's not local news. And if you're into it, like I am, I'm a junkie for town politics and news. And and I do spend a little bit of time watching the meetings. The other feature, and don't sell yourself short, is the is the YouTube rebroadcast of your of your meetings.
Oh, sure, I mean, you could always watch them.
So once you learn that and you learn to navigate that, that's very handy. You don't have to watch it on the same schedule. Monday nights, if you're busy or working or dinner, late dinner, the kids are at a ballgame or whatever, you can watch it any day of the week. And I use it all the time to go back several weeks if if I've missed some, the beginning of a certain topic.
Right. So back
Very handy.
Back to your thing about maybe every department has its own Facebook page or maybe its own communication page on the website or or something like that. But should that be regulated by a policy or procedure? So that all departments are using the same policies?
Without a doubt. It has to be standardized. It has to have someone, and I think we have a growing IT department. And they probably have standards and best practices within that industry that they can impose on it. And it should be there because, as you know better than I, the climate right now at local government, state government, federal government can get crazy very quickly. And it doesn't take much for someone to get out of hand and actually make people nervous and be dangerous. So there has to be a mechanism that you weed, everyone's welcome, and we invite everyone. But if if you're going to go on there and cause a lot of commotion and you make people nervous, then, you know, there has to be a mechanism to remove you.
And maybe if there was a a place to go for facts, for actual facts from from the people that are have actually made the statements or made the policies or the committees that have, this is what actually happened in our meetings, if that's where they start, that's probably a a more realistic way to look at it.
That would solve a lot of problems right off the rail because you, people are getting the information, the accurate information right away. And you don't let all of those rumors fester, and everyone has a little different idea. And that's when the spiral's out of control very quickly, when people start interjecting things. They're not sure what happened, but all of us, so you know, you know.
Well, that's that's true everywhere. Do you think board members are treated fairly?
I think overall they are. I think there's a couple of outliers. Somebody might speak to a board member inappropriately. I mean, the vast majority, and quite honestly, even the select board, everyone's sort of a volunteer. There's no one making any money at this. So it's really tough to see someone get raked over the calls or insulted or their family insulted when they're anyone I've ever run into down at town government is trying to do the best for the town. I don't always agree with them. They might have a different idea, a different way of doing it. So to to really beat them up and harass them is way out, way out of line. You can disagree with them, and that's really what it's all about. You can disagree, pose another idea. But when you start getting personal and mean, you know, but that's the climate out there. I mean, just a quick story out there, when I gathered my signatures for this position in the last couple of weeks. And I have done this before, I did in twenty twenty-one, but during the pandemic, it was a little bit different. You didn't have the face-to-face contact. But when I first started gathering the signatures and talking to people just on the street, there's a little air of viciousness from the from the constituency. Some people are up in arms, some people are disappointed, some people are mad. So I think when they lead with that, everything goes south very quickly versus trying to work on a solution.
Right, okay. Question number two. On April fifth, Select Board Chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the Select Board's March twenty-ninth three-to-two approval vote on supporting an RFP, a request for proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County Woodlot. He stipulates that, quote, "Since this is just the beginning of a long public process, that the Select Board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement as the presentation by Boston South clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of development on that land. How do you feel that this entire process has been handled so far? And what are your feelings on the proposed usage of that land?
Well, I've sort of been following right from the beginning. I happen to be watching the selectman's meeting. And number one, I think it's the the job and the responsibility of the Select Board to hear such proposals. And I think in that in that realm, they were well within their scope to have the group come in, talk about the proposal and the pending proposal that was on the, the only one that was on the board explained that night was the only one was the was this racetrack venue. I think what happened next is really where the problem started to arise. And I'm not privy to all of the information, but I don't see why a vote had to be taken that night. And I'm in the construction business, and I get RFPs, requests for proposals, weekly. And I've been doing it a long time. I can look at an RFP and have a ballpark number in my head, which I think this job might cost. But I'd be foolish to send that number on to the client without reading the RFP. There could be something in there that I, that's new this week or new to the job. So I think where a few of the select board members said they didn't have the information, they hadn't read the information. This is a pretty extensive project, a pretty, pretty major project for the fabric of Plymouth right in the heart of Exit Five, where there's a lot going on anyway. I I think the vote can easily be misconstrued by the development group going forward. They're going to go on to the next, in my opinion, in my opinion, I don't know this for sure, but they're going to go on to the next phases of licensing and per, excuse me, permitting. And they have in their back pocket a positive approval from the Board of Selectmen. They don't have to elaborate that it's missing the term thoroughbred racing. I think it was a mistake for the Select Board to to send them off with an approval of any kind with such little information. And I've told many people about that. That's been my position. The position overall of a racetrack in that area of town or any area of town, quite honestly, I think is wrong. It's not the right project for Plymouth. It's not the right project for that area. There's there's too much going on there. There's more residential coming online. That's going to be an impossible interchange and stretch a road to to transit here shortly. And to add a racetrack is 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 not, is not a good idea, in my opinion.
Okay. Now, that land is not owned by the town of Plymouth. That land is owned by the county.
County, exactly right.
So I I don't know if everyone is privy to what exactly is the procedure that that happens between the county who who put out the RFP, it wasn't Plymouth that put it out. And then the amount of time that they actually gave the Select Board or anybody to look at it. So that that's kind of an unknown. And as an as an outsider looking in, what I think was was just surprising was there was such a short amount of time where the word racetrack was mentioned. Had had, you know, months ago, the county said, we've gotten four or five different proposals for for this land. This is one of them, there's a couple for housing, there's a couple for something else. It might not have been so shocking, maybe, and that's not, I don't mean that word.
I think that's a good word. I think that's what happened.
Well, it was just like, whoa, a racetrack, because it's just something that nobody ever thought of. So going forward, if you were on the board, how would have you handled anything differently?
Well, I would have hoped that I would have stuck to the same sentiment that Selectman Flaherty brought up, that, you know, he can't make an educated decision with with no information. So I would have sent them back, and I would have reset the clock and 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 asked for a ton of information. Because you're asking, that's a big ask, to to put a racetrack and maybe a resort-style hotel and a minor league baseball field, all nice things in the right place. But to come in there in one meeting, a half an hour presentation, and then get a vote out of it, it wasn't done correctly. It should have been, the front end of it should have been public input. Just like you, I heard about the racetrack as a rumor around town, maybe tops, three, four days before the meeting. And I didn't put a lot of stock in it because I hadn't seen anything, you know. And it was just a rumor that popped out of out of nowhere. And and if I were on the board, I would, I would ask whether it's the planning department or whoever's hears these things first or gets gets wind of them first. Something like this has to be done over several meetings. People, stakeholders. People, stakeholders have to be brought in. The resident has to be brought in much quicker. I mean, that was, that was part of the frustration, I think, that night. Was that everyone was surprised. Everyone was shocked, to use your word. And some people reacted, and I think rightfully so, the way they did. I think the other problem that we have is, like you suggested at the beginning, it's the county's land, and the county has certain things. They're not limited like you would be if it were you and I trying to put a project there.
Sure.
And I had that, I ran into that in that very, that very area, that communications tower that's there. I'm in the communications tower business. And I tried to get a tower about 100 yards away during the same period of time turned down by the town. The county went and put that tower up, didn't even have to get permission from the town. So, they have some avenues. They don't have to go through the same process.
And maybe it would be a good thing for the town to really educate the residents of Plymouth. What are the rules and regulations regarding land that is owned by the county? And when do you get handcuffed that there's not much you can do? And it's just being, being out, you know, putting it all out there, saying, this is what happens. This is the process, and we're gonna follow the process.
It would go a long way, I think, to crawl this because it's not, in all fairness, it's not this Select Board's problem.
Correct.
But they've now made it their problem to some degree. But they could have handed that whole thing back, right back to the county, and then everyone's questions and anger and concerns would go to the county level, which, you know, the Select Board could still help out. But now they're sort of backpedaling because they're in it. They're in the mix. And they don't, in my opinion, maybe I'm wrong, they don't have a lot of say at this point, what's really gonna happen.
Right.
Now, they might have a couple of outs with zoning, but they have to hope that all goes through for them because...
And wasn't it suggested that there's gonna be a non-binding question on the ballot? That's just asks, I think it asks the public something, something to the effect of, would you support a thoroughbred racetrack in your community? Something to that effect. So, they can just get the measure of what people think, when or another.
I think the non-binding question is huge, and I hope it's not too late. The process might be too far ahead. But I think when you put it out, and it should be put out to the resident, to see really what the feeling is.
Yeah, what's the temperature? Just to push back a little bit on that, I believe this is a two-to-three-year process, just to vet all of this information. From what I gather, there's not gonna be anything actually constructed for a very long time.
That's what I have heard, and I hope that's true.
That's the due diligence that I think Dick Quintle was talking about, was that...
And he would know. I mean, they've talked to the people. So, I'll take him at his word, and hopefully that's the case so that, over that period of time, all these problems, all these concerns get worked out.
All the questions get worked out.
And if it can go forward and all the right provisions are put in.
That's right.
Then put it in.
So be it. Yep.
I'm with you on that. No doubt about it.
Question three. Taxes, a single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Development Foundation. All of these issues are tied together but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This doesn't seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative, project-based working group that hones in on a specific project? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments, boards, and committees with a singular goal and objective would be a far better use of time and resources and ultimately a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? And if so, give an example of what, an initiative that that might work on?
Well, I think the concept is the right idea. Get all the people in the room that make all these decisions. You eliminate all the back and forth, all of the wasted time, all the return trips to different meetings. It's imperative you do it. Now, I was in this room two years ago, three years ago, and my speech had exactly that commercial tax base. Is just, we're in dire need of to build that up. It's 10% last, whoever you talk to, it's 10, 12, maybe 14%, but it's terribly low.
It's not enough.
It's not enough. Economic development, I could have used my speech of three years ago. It's the same topics. Now, I know people in all of those different departments are working hard and trying to make things happen. It just hasn't popped yet. So, I give you good credit. That's a great idea to bring all of the forces together, get them all in the same room. And as an example of that, the town just went through voter redistricting. Much smaller by comparison.
Right.
But what they decided to do is put a working group together, put 15 people in a room. And we stayed in the room for eight hours, came back a second time for eight hours, and hammered it out.
Yeah.
And I'm not so sure you can jack up the commercial rate in the 16-hour period, but the concept is right. You put the people that are in there, all in the same room, making the decision, and someone will brainstorm something, and you work off the person next to you. He has an idea, she has an idea.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden, you know, it's not strung out by years because of meetings and agendas and the boards change and people's personalities. You get the people in there right now, all of those people you mentioned, economic development people, they know what they're doing. And I mean, I'm sure that's what they do for a living. But I think that's a great, great idea.
And every board and committee knows what they're doing, and bless them all for, they're all volunteers, basically, that are doing this work. And they get to be, well, they know, they're well-versed in what they're supposed to do.
In their lane, they do very well. There's no doubt about it.
Without a doubt. Now, when you mentioned the tax rate, when this was brought up a year and a half or two years ago to the Select Board, and there was a very passionate speech given about how it would really hurt the mom-and-pop businesses if they had to pay the same, a corporate tax rate as the same as a big box store. Why can't there be a residential tax rate, a mom-and-pop tax rate, and then an other commercial tax rate? Why couldn't something like that happen?
Technically and legally, I don't know why they couldn't be. That's a great idea. I've never even heard of a third one. I heard it was always, or I've had people talk to me about a split tax rate.
Right.
Business, residential.
Right.
And we have to do something because residential, from what town meeting just said, is 80, 85% of the budget. And there's people out there that aren't gonna be able to go much further.
Right.
So, the commercial tax rate, either we have to bring in businesses and jack that up if you want to keep it a single rate, or you have to be creative, like you suggest. And maybe you split the commercial rate so that you don't impact seasonal businesses, mom-and-pop businesses, but you have a national chain that is, you know, probably big enough to weather the storm and probably doing well. You know, maybe you hit them a little bit harder and fairly, of course, but, you know, they have to pay their fair share.
Yeah, you'd have to have, you know, clearly, yeah, different steps on what we qualify as.
But that's a great idea.
I don't even know if it's legal. I'm just...
I'm not sure it is either, but I've never heard, I've never heard it, but it's worth, it's worth looking into.
Right.
I mean, at this stage, everything should be explored, you know?
Exactly. Everything should be on the table, right? Okay. Question four. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government. Now, what do you believe are its current strengths? What are its drawbacks? And do you think it's sustainable, given all the changes that are facing this town in the coming years?
Well, in the interest of full disclosure, I was involved with the group that pushed pretty hard to get the charter question, charter commission question on the ballot.
Yep.
I think it's long overdue that Plymouth explore the other possible forms of government. That being said, I love, and I've said this on many occasions to many groups, people ask me, because it does appear to be a conflict. Here I am trying to be in the town government, but I'm advocating to explore other forms of government. But presently, while we have the representative town meeting, I love it. I want to work within it. They let me go down and debate and vote on some big-ticket items, some big projects, and I enjoy it. I enjoy the responsibility. But as a business owner and, you know, a family, I also have different ideas on the way this government works. And it's, I think we've outgrown it. A community of 60, per the census, I think, was 63,000 people, say 65,000 people. A budget we just passed last, two weeks ago, was $260 million, $270 million. It's not the right government for that, for those parameters. And the reason it doesn't work on occasion is we, as a town, because we only meet twice a year, and I know there's an option to meet more often if you put all the signatures together and you get the permissions. But the fact of the matter is, we meet twice a year, and we're making huge decisions. And then if something happens in the interim between those two six-month meetings, we end up either missing out on an opportunity or we end up paying an exorbitant amount of money because we haven't reacted quickly. And the biggest example, and I use it all the time, there's several of them, but the biggest one is the, is the library, the local library on South Street. When that first came to town meeting, it needed a roof. It needed a roof replacement. The project cost was nine, a little over $900,000. Town meeting okayed it, gave the $900,000 to the town, "Go fix the roof." Everyone sort of forgot about it, myself included. Well, the next town meeting, the next spring, it comes back, fixes the library roof. How can that be? We just fixed the library roof last year. Well, it didn't get done. And now, in order to get it done, the cost is 2.1 million dollars. So, everyone was very surprised and shocked and upset, but yet we voted for it again. Go, take the 2.1 million, go fix the roof. Now, totally forgetting about it. And I'm not making this up, but the third year goes by and the library roof is on as an article. Now, it's $3.2 million to fix the roof.
So, what happened to the $900,000 and the 2.1?
Well, because of the delays in getting the bid out and the cost and rise of construction costs. So, because we waited three years to keep on putting this out to bid, the price elevated almost three, all three times. So, the resident and taxpayer has a new library roof today. The work got done. But they paid three times what they should have. And those things are happening over and over, sometimes in a smaller scale, but it's happening. And that's the problem with the present form of government. It's just not responsive enough to deal with that issue. And it's a shame.
It's really fiscal.
It's fiscal more than anything, I would say.
Well, there's anything else that's fiscal.
From my point of view, there's some things that, bylaws and pieces of property that we might miss. But I think usually we catch those in time.
Okay. What is, so you said you enjoy actually being part of town meetings?
I thoroughly enjoy it.
So, the premise of being able to actually participate in your own town's governance is good?
Oh, and I think that's why we've maintained as long as we have. It's a great feeling, and if you're into it, and you want to give back to the town, and you want to help out, and if you're knowledgeable and you want to read about some dry stuff, about water wells and things like that, it's a great form of government.
Right.
And I would recommend it to anyone.
Yeah. One thing that I'd love you to comment on is, I know at town meeting, there's this really big, thick book that all the town meeting members get that kind of explain all the articles that they're going to vote on. And I know we do some videos for some of these. We record some of the presentations.
Sure.
It's amazing the amount of information that those town meeting members need to understand, comprehend, and have time to actually really digest what they're voting on. Do you think, how do you think that could be approved so that as they go along through the year, they're getting more of this information? Or do they already?
I think the town has done a fairly good job of getting things on the webpage as quick as they can as they become available. And not to correct you, but we get about six of those books.
Oh.
There is one thick one, but there's many that are about half the size. And some of them are very dry, and their budgets and their numbers. And it takes a lot of time to read them and go through them properly and ask questions, educated questions. And you get them, I think the bylaw is, you only get it 14 or don't hold it there. Maybe 21 days before the town meeting.
Okay.
So, it's an awful lot to digest in a short amount of time. Especially if you're just opening the packet 21 days before. But if you're watching some meetings, stuff gets, the advisory of finance does a really good job. The gentleman that runs that, Mr. Canty, he starts early. They go over the articles. All the members of that board break up into groups. And I think as a committee, they do a good job covering the articles. I think there's a fiscal component that could be improved on. But I think, day in and day out, they cover the articles pretty well, as do the selectmen. The selectmen put the wiring out. They talk about the articles. But it's really incumbent on you to watch the meetings because that's happening beforehand.
Exactly.
Unless you go to PAC TV, YouTube, and you watch the old meetings, catch up.
But there's a lot of information. That's the point.
Ton of information. Ton of information.
Yeah.
And, you know, not to, there's some people that don't open their envelope until the Saturday morning of town meeting. And by that time, it's too late because these are expensive decisions you're making. So, there's not many, but I mean, the vast majority of the people that I know and I see do their work.
And now we have two more districts.
Three.
Three?
Yeah, we ended up with three.
Three more, three more districts. Right, so there's...
So, we've gone to 18.
Yeah.
18 precincts.
Are there nine in each?
There'll be nine in each.
So, there's 27 more people.
Be 27 additional people. Exactly right.
Yeah.
For now. And that was part of that redistricting I talked about earlier. And that was a very good job by that group because you had to work within the state. We had put a plan together, and the state came in and put their plan over us, and it didn't fit.
Right.
So, we had to go back in the room and do it again.
Yeah.
And to everyone's credit, they got it done.
Well, that shows how teamwork.
The teamwork. And then there were residents that were impacted. They called in. We made provisions. There were very, very few cases of people that were dislocated or upset. I think we solved most everyone's problem.
Which was wonderful.
To that working group's credit, and the town. The town had people on the board, the group as well. And that's an example, going back to your silo thing of combining silos.
Sure.
Everyone was pulling in the same direction, and it paid off.
Yeah, it's amazing how well sometimes that works. So, we have about eight minutes left. So, what would you like to talk about that we haven't talked about yet? Would you like to revisit anything, or do you want to just...
Does that complete all of your questions?
That completes my questions. Yes.
I guess the biggest thing I want to speak to is really why I'm running.
Okay.
It's sort of unorthodox. I joined the race for Select Board literally the 11th hour. There was only hours left when you could submit your name.
Okay.
And I did that because there were, for the longest time, two available positions when Mr. Flaherty announced he wasn't gonna go for reelection. I think it was late February. And I understand that, you know, he has a young family and a business. And so, now two positions are now gonna be on the May 21st ballot. And again, as a junkie of watching town politics, there were only two candidates. So, I felt uncomfortable with that. You know, a town of Plymouth's caliper, its size. I would have thought there would have been a pool of candidates that wanted to go down and work for the town, work for the resident. And it wasn't happening. To his credit, Mr. Mahoney jumped in the last week, and I jumped in a couple of days after him. So, I think it presents a, well, it does. It presents four options for the resident.
Yeah.
And they get to listen to all of us through this forum and get to make some decisions. And if they want some change, or they know some of the players already. They, there's one incumbent. They know ballpark, you know, how he's gonna work for them. They know Mr. Mahoney certainly. He was a longtime selectman.
Yeah.
So, they have some options. And I thought it was important to give the resident options. And my time allows me to do it. My place in life, I'm at, I'm not retired, but I'm coming to the end of my working career. I do a little bit for the fun, and I have some ample time. So, I wanted to throw my hat into the ring, see what happens. So...
What would be your...
That's what I did.
What would be your, the thing that you feel strongest about that you would want to tackle immediately?
The first thing I want to do, and this is the second reason I decided to run, and it goes to your earlier observation, is that there's a growing feeling that the Select Board might have lost its way a little bit. And there's a faction of the board that I believe is heading in the wrong direction. So, my hope would be, if elected, to go back down to town hall and be part of the board and bring back balance to the board and confidence. I mean, the Select Board's always been sort of an anchor around town. You don't always agree with them, but you shouldn't be questioning them as much as they have been the last six or eight months. And I know they have some difficult issues that have come across their desk. So, I mean, it's gonna warrant some controversy because you have some big-ticket issues. They're not, they're no longer talking about putting up a traffic light or a stop sign. These are big items that they're dealing with.
Right.
So, that was the first thing. And that's no disrespect to anyone on the board. It's just that I think the board could use some change. And to that point, during town meeting, we talked about an article of taking the small stipend that the selectmen now receive away. Somebody brought that up as a, as an amendment to an article to take the $4,000 away. So, that tells you that there were some people disgruntled. So that tells you that there were some people disgruntled.
Right.
Who would have thought that? For years, as long as I've been down there, and for as long as I've been watching town meeting, that's a housekeeping how to go. You stamp it and you go ahead. This past town meeting, we talked about it for half an hour. And that's not the way it should be, it's not the way we should be doing it. So that's really an opportunity to get down and provide some balance. And then once down there, commercial tax base would be my biggest issue. And I know it's a daunting task as well. It's been 10, 12% to get it to where it needs to be, and some people say 30%. You know, I'm not going to sit here and tell you I'm going to bring it to 30%, but we've got to start getting it going 14, 15, 16, going in the right direction. If the resident is, or the average resident's going to be able to make it because it's getting more and more difficult to live here in town.
Yeah. And to your point, to bring commercial businesses here that don't necessarily draw more from the resources or the police, the fire, the schools, the water, the sewage, all that, are there businesses that you can bring that can bring money in, can bring a tax base in, but don't really pull and drain on our government? That's one obviously very difficult thing to figure out. And the other thing to what you just said is being able to afford to work here and live here. I mean, you can work here, but where do you live?
It's getting more and more difficult. I mean, I really would shudder to be a young family now and trying to move into Plymouth. I mean, it's probably cost prohibitive. Right, it's not just Plymouth, though, I don't want to be unfair. It's around, it's across the board, but whatever we can do to improve it. Plymouth is terrific, and it's been good to me, my family, I have zero complaints. It's really been nice. And I'd like to make sure I do what I can to keep it like that, and if I can, add to it. So that's really where I'm coming from.
Okay.
So I really appreciate it, and I'd like to remind everybody, if I have a minute, if I have a minute left.
You absolutely do, you have two minutes.
Oh, two minutes, okay, well, I want to make sure that everyone, this is a very important election this year, this spring. We have four non-binding ballot questions. To your point, you mentioned it earlier, there's three that speak to the former government issue. And there's one for the racetrack proposal. So if you've never gone out to vote, this is the one you want to go to. This is going to garner, should garner a lot of voters. Also, every town meeting member due to redistricting is on the ballot.
Right.
There's a contested planning board race, there's a contested select board race.
And school committee.
And school committee as well.
Yeah.
So I see that as a good thing. So win, lose, or draw, I think it's a good thing, I really do. But it really, you really count on the resident to come out and vote. And it's 15, 20 minutes on Saturday, May 21st. It's very difficult as a junkie, again, I don't want to overuse the term, but when 10% of the people come out, or 12%, you don't really get a good barometer if, did they want it, did they not want it? Are we doing the right job, are we not doing the right job?
What aren't we messaging too?
Yeah. So I think if we don't get, you know, 35, 40, 50% with all these non-binding questions, something's amiss, and I look forward to a big turnout. So come out May 21st, and thank you very much to PAC TV and everyone, the staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
You're very welcome, thank you. And thank you for running and for all the candidates, to all the, it's pretty amazing that people do these jobs and literally it's for free. I mean, for the amount of hours that people put in.
No one's doing it for the money.
Bless everybody who's actually doing it, so thank you, Alan, very much.
It's a good group as well, it's a good group of candidates.
Oh, absolutely. And thank you for participating in our interview, and we wish you best of luck throughout the campaign and in the election. Today we're speaking with John Mahoney, one of the four candidates for select board in the Plymouth Town election. John, thank you so much for joining us today.
My pleasure, Julie.
Okay, I'm going to give you a little preamble before the first question.
Sure.
Many people who responded to our inquiry for questions that they would like to have the candidates answer included questions about the behavioral integrity of some members of many different boards and committees. How and where information is communicated was also a problem that was brought up. So based on that, question number one. The behavior of members of the select board have come under scrutiny over the past few years. Many, quote, "debates on multiple topics have taken place over social media and in venues that are not in official nature." In 2013, a procedure was established governing the use of official town social media accounts as well as guiding principles of conduct and decorum for all town employees, board and committee members, town meeting members, and anyone else involved in the town's governance. Do you believe that these policies and procedures need an update for 2022? What would you base that on? And what would you recommend for guidelines and standards in regards to communicating in general and specifically via social media or other non-sanctioned platforms?
So, you know, when you have members who are in elected position, it's difficult to enforce such rules. So I just came from an event, and I was discussing, I was in, you know, a small group of people, four of us, and I made a joke. And I said that I was going to balance the town's budget on a new tax, and it was going to be a Facebook tax. And that if you put inaccurate information out there in Facebook or social media, and the person, one of the other people in the circles said, my God, we'll balance the budget overnight. So I think ultimately what we're talking about here in social media will be one of the downfalls of the republic of the United States of America. It is just a complete cesspool. I have the ability to go in there if and when somebody, you know, tags me or references me, and if it's inaccurate information, I can go in there and say, jeez, A didn't happen. This is B happened, and explain why. And then the ability to get out. It's, you know, it's just, it's a universe that, you know, you want to believe that it's there to disseminate accurate information, but it doesn't. And, you know, you can sit here and update all the rules you want at the local level, but ultimately, you know, obviously, you know, we're talking about free speech here. So some people, no matter what, are going to go onto Twitter, the other one is Instagram and Facebook, and I don't know what else is out there, and say what they're going to say. So some of the things I see are frightening, you know, obviously from some elected officials and from the public. And it's unacceptable. And, you know, it's an unfortunate, it's a negative, you know, it's a bad reflection on our society, but that's, you know, that's where it is. And obviously, at a higher level, I mean, look at, we know that Russia has done with respect to trying to influence the last two presidential elections here by, you know, having, apparently bots go on there and, you know, put false information out there about, you know, certain candidates and trying to drive certain demographics to the left or to the right.
So how can the little town of Plymouth better communicate through proper channels or sanctioned channels so that information that people really need to know is out there in a timely manner? I think one of the problems is that there's no set way of communicating what is happening at town hall unless you watch the meetings. And a lot of people don't have the time to watch the meetings. So how do you communicate what's going on and what is on the plates of the select board or the town manager or any of the boards or commissions in a place where people can believe the accuracy of it?
Well, I believe that the town of Plymouth has their own, you know, Facebook link and Twitter page. So, you know, that data, you know, through the town manager in conjunction with the chair and the select board, they should be putting information out there saying, you know, this happened today or this is going to happen next week. And, you know, there should be some generic posts in multiple forums about what is occurring, what has occurred, and, you know, potentially what can occur. You know, I do know that one of the current select board members does a great job of posting, you know, a copy of the agenda for the select board every week. And, you know, gets that out there in multiple, I don't know what these places are, sites. I don't know what these things are called on Facebook, you know, the different.
Pages, the different pages and groups, yeah.
And puts that out there so that, you know, the public does have a higher level of knowledge of when the meetings occur, when they start, and what the discussion will be, and what the agenda items are. So, but, no, you're right. And then obviously, you know, I served on the board before, and I first got on the board in '08. And if you go back to '08, back at the old town hall on 11 Lincoln Street, if there was a hot button issue at that meeting, you could look out to a table over here, and you'd have, you would have, the Quincy Patriot Ledger would have a reporter there, the Brockton Enterprise, WATD, and the Old Colony Memorial. So for hot button items, you could have three to six members of the press sitting at a table covering that story, and then you would read it in hard copy. And obviously, here it is a decade later, you talk about how, you know, our society evolves, more of this content is online and not, you know, people aren't buying newspapers anymore, or at least listening to that content, or reading that content online.
Right.
But now, now in today's world, you have, I think you have a reporter from the WATD and sporadically somebody from the Old Colony.
Right.
And that's predominantly it. And so it's just, it's unfortunate, Julie, it's just a different world.
So does the onus fall back then on the town to make sure that the information that is out there is accurate?
Yeah, absolutely, but I think the, I think, I want to believe that for the most part, the information being put out there through the official town channels is accurate. But I can't, how is the town going to monitor an individual who goes outside of proper town channels and just puts something, lays something out there on social media?
So let me ask that, so if something is said on social media that is totally incorrect, would it be who the select board or whatever, whoever was said about, to say, to get the full answer to this question, please visit this site? Versus having a back and forth?
In today's world, I don't know how, I mean, we're going to hire a staff member to just monitor social media for inaccurate posts? I mean, I can't go to that point.
Right. Well, it's been talked about a communications person being hired for the town.
Right.
That's their, I would assume, one of their jobs would be to make sure information is communicated in an effective way and be able to maybe offset what goes on in social media.
Yeah, sure. So I don't know, I'm going to pay somebody a full-time salary to sit there and stay on social media all day.
I don't think it's just that.
Looking for inaccurate information coming to, from.
Well, I think it might be more to be proactive about all the information that should go out. I think that's probably more what the objective would be, and that would make sense. Now, do you think select board members are treated fairly by the public? I mean, you were one.
Sure. Well, you, you know, you're in the business of trying to make everybody happy. Guess what? You can't do that.
Right.
Okay, so at the end of the day, you're trying to make decisions that I want to believe are in the best, especially, long-term interest of the community. That's what you're trying to do.
Right.
And, you know, it's a policy direction board, and, you know, you have one-fifth of the vote, and you're trying to, you know, get the, you know, get the town to attack in one direction as opposed to attacking in another direction. It is, listen, occasionally, I do go on to some of those pages. I mean, you know, you have, it seems to me it's the same 15 to 30 people screaming over each other, you know? And the majority of the time, it's over inaccurate information. It's speculative, you know, and it's not factual data. And you just, I mean, you've got to develop a thick skin, you can't allow that stuff to bother you.
Right.
And then when I see something particularly, you know, egregious, I do go in there and say, hey, individual, you're wrong, this is what happened, this is what I did. You got any questions? What's it called, IM?
Yeah.
PM?
They message me or, yeah.
Private messaging me or whatever it is.
Sure.
And for the most part, they do.
Okay. And then you can work that out between the two of you. Yeah, okay. Okay, question number two. On April 5th, select board chair Richard Quintle penned a letter outlining the events that led up to the select board's March 29th 3-2 approval vote on supporting an RFP, request for proposal, from Boston South Real Estate and Development LLC to begin their due diligence in determining the best use of the Plymouth County woodlot. Mr. Quintle stipulates that, quote, "Since this is just the beginning of a long public process, that the select board does not specifically endorse any specific use of the woodlot at this time," end quote. Now, many residents have mixed feelings about this statement as the presentation by the Boston South group clearly outlined a thoroughbred racetrack as one of the components of the development of that land. How do you feel this entire process has been handled so far? And what are your feelings on the proposed usage of that land?
So, there's probably two dozen reasons why I am against it. And number one is that I have a problem with that form of government owning the land. That 110-acre site should be owned by the town of Plymouth.
So just to clear, so in case people don't know, it's owned by the county, Plymouth County.
It's owned by Plymouth County Government.
Okay.
You have an entity with a $10 to $14 million budget. I have had these conversations over the years with former chairs, with obviously the, you know, the town manager, who is no longer with us, and probably even the individual who has the job now. You know, the town of Plymouth pays the county $200,000 to $300,000 a year to be a member, and we've always said, what do we get in return? So when you figure that one out, let us know. I have a problem, the second reason, I have a problem with the county government telling the town, we don't have to abide by your zoning regulations. We have the power to circumvent that.
But they do technically, correct? Don't they, technically, doesn't, don't they report to the state and not to the towns?
I think, I think that in a perfect world, maybe if it was a governmental need and they were actually doing something that provided a service to the government, but in something like this, where this is, government is not in the, shouldn't be in the casino or horse track business, that something like this, you would have to go to the local community and, you know, go to the planning board, and then if you need some relief from local zoning, go to the zoning board of appeals.
Right. But now, we know that that does not have to happen in this case. So one of the things that obviously happened at the select board meeting this week was there's going to be a question on the ballot. What do people feel about, do you, I think it's, do you support a thoroughbred horse track in Plymouth? So they'll find out, and now it's a non-binding referendum, it's a non-binding question. It doesn't really matter, other than it will, it'll tell what the people think.
But it won't.
Why? Why do you say that?
So a question like that is basically the equivalent of saying, let's put a question on the ballot saying, should the town of Plymouth distribute free turkeys for next Thanksgiving, along with cranberry sauce and some stuffing and sweet potato pie? It's the same question, okay?
Why do you say that?
So 20 years ago, there was a non-binding question to say, do you want offshore, a casino, a floating casino that would leave from Cordage Park and go on to the Atlantic Ocean, and we'd have gambling there? They put that to the ballot, it passed overwhelmingly, and nothing happened. And then.
They, it was four, people said, yes, we do it, okay.
Correct.
I bet we never got a boat that went.
Correct. And then May of '08, obviously, there was another question, said, you know, do you want Hollywood, do you want a movie studio to come into Plymouth, Massachusetts? That passed 88 to 12, okay? The fascinating thing to me is, especially on this new one, you're voting on something, you have no idea what the financial ramifications are, and they are significant. And the taxpayers are going to subsidize. Your taxes aren't going to go down, they're going to go up increasingly because of this. So you're voting on something, you're just taking the temperature of something. So it's probably going to pass 70 to, you know, 30 or something like that. Okay, how do you vote on something where you have no data that tells you how it's going to affect you financially? And that's what everybody wants to know.
Right.
What am I paying in property taxes and what am I getting in return for it? So you're going to, I mean, you know, I gave you, my first answer was, county government shouldn't own the land. Second answer was, I have a problem with them believing they can circumvent the zoning laws in the community. And the last answer is, you're going to be taxed out of your home. So in between, you know, there's another 15 to 20 answers there. You know, the traffic impacts, who's paying for the infrastructure? Where's the water coming from? Who's paying for the wastewater system? How many incremental lights are you going to pay for? Is that money coming from the state or the feds?
Well, isn't that all part of this process that they're supposed to go through over the next couple of years?
In theory, so I think what happened here was that the county got $450,000 of free money, you know, $150,000 a year for three years. So, you know, that group can go off and vet this and come back. But it is another get-rich-quick scheme where the, you always, the taxpayers get caught. They always get left paying for the bill, that's what happens. You have a textbook example. You probably currently, right now, have the greatest example in New England of that happening. You were told, you were told back in the late '60s, we're going to build a power plant, okay? Jobs, everybody's going to live for free, and the federal government's going to take, spend fuel out of here. None of that happened. Your taxes skyrocketed, you took in $1 to $2 billion in tax revenue from the plant, you have nothing to show for it. You are now the host community of a nuclear waste dump, your compensation is zero. And the jobs, I think they're down to 40 to 60 people decom- to 40 to 60 people decommissioning the thing on the site. And within five years, there'll be nobody there. So you were told you were going to live for free. The opposite happened.
Okay.
That's what happens in these situations.
All right. Gotcha. Question three. Taxes. A single tax rate for personal and commercial use, commercial development.
Is that a question, by the way? Is that a question? That first sentence, a single tax for personal?
No, there was a single tax rate for personal and commercial use.
Residential.
Residential. I'm sorry. Residential, right. We don't have two tax rates. Okay. So, question three. Taxes. A single tax rate for residential and commercial use, commercial development, apartment and condominium development, the work of the Plymouth Area Economic Foundation. All of these issues are tied together but have varied departments and boards and committees working on different aspects of them. This doesn't seem to be an efficient method of doing business. Is there a way to combine these silos of effort into a collaborative project-based working group that hones in on a specific project and works together? Do you believe that combining the efforts of many departments, boards and committees with a singular goal and objective would be a far better use of time and resources and ultimately a more efficient way to create positive outcomes? If so, please give me an example of what initiative might work using this method.
So I think what happened is, what we have here is there's a false narrative or a misconception.
Okay.
That Plymouth is anti-business. In my opinion, and I think I can back this up with the data, you haven't had a revenue problem in the community since the plant showed up, which was New Year's Day of 1972. You've never gone for a two and a half override. And so Proposition 2 and 1/2 says that you can take your tax levy up 2 and 1/2% a year plus whatever new growth you get. It doesn't discriminate. It doesn't say new growth that is only industrial, commercial. It says any new growth. So the problem is, in the last 50 years, you've added $8 billion in residential development, 6.5, give or take, in traditional. You know, I live on Whiting Street or a regular cul-de-sac. And then I think the Pine Hills, the quote-unquote empty nester over 55, I think they're in the 1.4 to 1.5 billion range. So you have $8 billion.
Okay.
In 50 years. You have another 2 to 5 billion of residential growth in the queue for the next 20. So this question has come up over the years because the perception is, is because the taxes keep going up, we must be anti-business. You're not. You've, you have pretty much allowed anything that has wanted to come to this community in the door. Okay? I don't know what is not made it here. So, and I've heard all the stories over the years. You know, you have a planning board. These people go in front of the planning board. If they need some relief from the current zoning laws, they go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay? So I think what you have is this perception that, you know, the, the community is against development. They're not. So what happened is, you know, the worst thing that happened was the plant showed up. You, instantaneously, the plant took up 50% of the tax levy. So when they showed up, they instantaneously overnight, you went from 20% industrial, commercial to 70. You're now down to 16. Okay? Because of the $8 billion. So you're to the point now that you're probably going to end up in the 94 to 98 range by the year 2040 of residential development. And the other 2 to 6% is going to be personal property, industrial and commercial. Commercial, the Hanover Mall was an anchor on the cell show for years. It's, 80% of it has been demolished. It's coming back residential, quote-unquote, mixed use.
Right.
If you've been up to the Independence Mall lately, okay?
Yeah.
10 years ago, I had somebody tell me that, Jesus, too bad that the Independence Mall wasn't a little further south. We would have gotten that tax, those tax dollars. And I told that person, the town dodged a bullet. You don't want that. I was in the office of the Kingston Town Manager a decade ago. Their largest taxpayer was the Independence Mall and they were paying at the time 1.3 to 1.4 million a year. And they wanted a reduction in their taxes of $400,000 to $500,000. Commercial is going the way of the dodo. And we are way behind the curve.
Yeah.
So you can look at Commerce Way. They can't make money anymore with brick and mortar retail. What are you doing? You're going residential. Look at Home Depot Drive. Need to make money? We're going residential. Okay? That's the problem. So this, this question has been asked over the years because of false, a false narrative. You're, for 50 years, you're probably the most pro-economic development community in New England. You've never had to go for a two and a half override.
Right.
In '05, you passed a $200 million long-term debt exclusion under Proposition 2 and 1/2. That's it. But you've never had to go for a two and a half override, like virtually every other community in Plymouth County, because you, quote-unquote, have this unlimited amount of new growth coming in, which is predominantly residential.
Right.
And that allows you to go from year to year without going to the voters and saying, hey, gee, we need, we need a two and a half override of $3.5 million this year for three, for a year. And if we don't get that, we're going to have to lay off X amount of police, fire DPW and, and, you know, teachers. So there's a perception out there. I completely disagree with it. Are there a few things with respect to permitting in Town Hall where maybe we can streamline it?
Right.
Sure. You can tweak a few things.
Right.
Maybe help people out. Absolutely.
Right.
But at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Any new growth that you have.
Yeah.
If it's going in the general fund.
Yeah.
Your taxes are still going up.
Okay. So I guess my question was more, a big, let's say a big economic development project for commercial comes before the town. And it has to go through all the different boards that have to have their hand in it. My question is, does it make sense for the whole group to decide, you know what, this is something we all believe would be good for the town? So you work together collectively on this one project, maybe two or three people from each board committee that would be, that was more my question is, is being, and that also fosters an environment of, of working together and transparency. You know what each other's doing every step of the way.
Right. So.
Shoot, shoot, shoot a hole in that theory.
So a great, a great example is where we currently are today.
Yep.
So the Plymouth Industrial Development Corporation was founded in 1962, this quasi-public-private entity.
Yep.
To foster economic development. It expired in 2012, 50 years, but it's still going today. And here we are at year 60.
Yep.
So in the fall of 17, they presented, I'm sorry, the Economic Development Foundation presented to the board. And, you know, I asked, what were the vital statistics?
Yep.
So you're looking at 450 acres. And at the time, I think it was 60 corporations, 5,000 jobs.
Right. Here, in this.
That's 55 years of consistent public-private investment. Okay? You have to have the land. You have to then work with the government or the private sector. You have to come together. You have to provide electricity or power. You have to have water. You have to have wastewater. You have to have roads. Okay?
Yeah.
So we're always looking for this get-out-of-jail-free card economically.
Yeah.
It, you know, it doesn't exist. So if you look at Camelot Drive, and if you look at where we currently are, those are textbook examples of sustainable, long-term economic development.
Okay.
Okay. You look at brick and mortar retail with respect to commercial.
Yeah.
It's over. I mean, you got to figure that out. You got, you got a guy with a shaved head, I think lives in Washington State. He's worth $200 to $300 billion. The guy went into business to drive brick and mortar retail out of business. So it, you know, you've got to adapt and government is not good at doing that.
Okay.
Whether it's a town, a city, a state, or the federal government. They're all, they're always behind the curve chasing themselves.
So is, is there any answer to that for the Town of Plymouth?
To what?
To, you're saying it's almost impossible to do. Well, they did it here in the industrial park. Can we, can we do another industrial park?
Where's the land?
I don't know.
Okay. So I made a presentation to a committee, I think last fall.
Yeah.
It was called, you know, Capitalism and the U.S. Dollar. And how that, with respect to government, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. We're making a cake.
Yeah.
It's an economic development cake. Okay? There's certain, you have to go to the cupboard.
Mm-hmm.
You have to pull the ingredients out.
Yep.
Land.
Yeah.
Water.
Yep.
Wastewater.
Yep.
Power, roads. Then you need good fiscal policy. You don't have that at the community level. You don't have that at the state level. Okay?
Okay.
Where's the land? And by the way, with respect to water, you're negative one right now. So you had a new well come on down at Forges Field, I think two years ago, giving you a million gallons of water a day.
Yeah.
All right. That water's already gone. It's already into the system and gone. If you talk to Mr. Beeter, your Director of Public Words, to have the complete level of safety redundancy in the system and mitigating risk, you need another well today. That's with no future growth, whether it's residential, industrial, or commercial. And the question is where that well's going to come from.
Right.
And we don't know where.
Okay.
So the problem is, Julie, if you look at Boston, a century ago, they went out to, they created the Quabon Reservoir. They had 5,000 people forcibly removed from their homes in five little communities. And they put up a dam. And they created this body of water and they surrounded it with 150 square miles of land, where human beings are not allowed. And then it goes by gravity in a tunnel to Boston. If it stopped raining tomorrow, the Quabon has enough water for six years. Public safety, public health, and economic development. If you look at Brockton, 60, 65 years ago, the Commonwealth through a law gave them complete control of Silver Lake, which is the seventh largest naturally occurring body in Massachusetts.
Yep.
Okay? So Silver Lake is surrounded by open space. And then a pipe drive sends that water over to Brockton.
Right.
And then Brockton went out and said, okay, now we don't need any trees because they're all in Pembroke, Kingston, Halifax, and Plimpton. So, so, but here in Plymouth and down on Cape Cod, you have to have your own land.
Right.
And a, and a well is, I don't know, 100 to 300 acres. So you're getting to the point of, it's basically, you better, you, you need one to two, three future well sites or the end is, it's not going to end well.
Okay.
No pun intended. And going back to 2016, there was a drought in 2016. One of the wells in the southern end of the community went down to nothing multiple times. And I asked the department head, what did you do at that point in time? And they said, we crossed our fingers and hoped that the public didn't figure it out. I mean, you're, you're really on the precipice of, if you don't get that one figured out, it's, it's just, it's not good.
Okay. We have seven minutes left. Let's, let me give you a last question. Let's talk about Plymouth's current form of government.
Sure.
What do you believe are its current strengths and drawbacks? And do you think it's sustainable, given all the challenges that we're facing in this town in the coming years?
Yes, it's absolutely sustainable. So when I told you that I presented, I presented to the Charter Commission, I don't know, October, November. So I did a six or seven slide presentation on, so I called it Capitalism and the U.S. Dollar. And it's basically, you know, how you handle money? Are you handling money in a responsible, long-term manner? And in the late 90s, the community had a single A-plus bond rating. A few, in the early 2000s, you went to a double A-negative. And I forget, I think, I don't know, '08 or '20, '10, you went to a double A. And then I think in 16, you went to a double A-plus. You've gotten three bond ratings in the last 20 years. So that's a significant jump. And then when you top that, when you talk about that upper echelon of bond ratings, now you're up into the, there's only three levels above that. It's triple A-negative, triple A, and triple A-plus. And there's only, the last I saw, there was only 28 communities in Massachusetts that have accomplished that. Only, only 7% to 8% of the communities.
Okay.
Okay. It's Dennis, Falmouth, Cohasset, Duxbury.
Yep.
Boston, Lexington, you know, Weston, Wellesley. You get my drift?
Yeah. But so people that don't understand what, how that impacts what we're talking about.
It's a credit score.
Okay.
So the analogy I made.
It's good.
That night was, you have a personal credit score.
Yep.
That is the credit score for a community.
Okay.
Irrespective of your form of government.
Okay.
And you've done a bunch of good things in the last 20 years. The audits in the last decade have been glowing. You really have your fiscal house in order. You have a bunch of stabilization accounts. You have, you know, quote-unquote rainy day funds.
Yep.
You, you eliminated double taxation in 2013. So there's no more general fund subsidy of the enterprise funds that ended, the last fiscal year we did that was FY12.
Yeah.
So that, if you lived in Cedarville, the Pine Hills, Manomet, West Plymouth.
Yep.
And you didn't get town sewer.
Yeah.
You weren't subsidizing it. I, you know, it's unfair that if you live in Cedarville.
Yep.
Your money is coming out of your pocket to keep my sewer fees down. Inappropriate.
Okay.
So you thought outside the box. You took the meals tax. You were, you, you passed a home rule petition. You didn't allow it to get buried into the, the black hole of the general fund.
Yeah.
You built, you invested in the downtown area, $54 million investment without raising property taxes in the new Town Hall.
Yeah.
Okay? Stuff like that. And I asked, I've literally talked to dozens of people, and I would be firmly on board with a change of government. If you can explain to me how our financial situation improves.
Okay.
And nobody's ever given me an answer.
Okay.
So if you look at the four, four different forms, so I'm going to give you a textbook example. So the auto excise tax.
Yep.
That is a progressive tax. When you own an automobile in Massachusetts, in your particular community, you go to the local Town Hall to pay the tax.
Right.
Government doesn't look at you and say, what's your sexual orientation? What's your race? What's your religion?
Right.
How tall are you? What color are your eyes?
Right.
Okay. You're a human being.
Yep.
You own an automobile, a motor vehicle.
Right.
There's a tax. They want to know three things. The make, the model, and the year.
Right.
That's it. And the, and the computer spits out a number. That's a progressive tax.
Okay.
So in theory, that tax was supposed to cover infrastructure or roads. It doesn't do that. So in 2017, the Plymouth Select Board, we rectified that. And we started to wean the auto excise tax out of the general fund to proactively invest in roads.
Yep.
So now, that's hypocritical to charge you a tax for roads that doesn't go to roads.
Right.
That wouldn't happen in the regular private sector. Okay?
Correct.
So four different forms of government in Plymouth County.
Yep.
You got one, Brockton, mayor, city council.
Yep.
Where's the auto excise tax? It's in the general fund. Now we're going to go to Bridgewater. You got a town council, strong town manager. Where's the auto excise tax? It's in the general fund. Now we're going to go to Halifax, Kingston, Duxbury, Pembroke, and some of those other small, open town meeting. Town manager, town administrator, open town meeting.
Right.
Where's the, where's the auto excise tax? It's in the general fund. So, you know, irrespective of the form of government.
Yep.
They all have the same fiscal policy.
Okay.
Nobody can think longer than 365 days at a time. And that's what's wrong with the, the, the community, the state, and the country. There's no long-term fiscal plan.
Okay. So in your last two minutes, talk about what you would do as a select board member. And some of the things that you've brought up today, are they impossible to do? Or can you start working on them?
Well, my, my big thing was, obviously to people that know me, is that the, I call it, I, what I, what I refer to it as general fund socialism, is that, you know, when you believe that all new growth should end up in this, in this black hole of the general fund.
Right.
That's the term that I use for it. It's bizarre. And the inability to think longer than a year at a time. So I've always been a huge advocate of creating an outside of the general fund, infrastructure fund. Because what happens is, you show up at these points in the future and you need a school. And we hem and haw over raising property taxes to invest in a school. You don't have to do that. And the single greatest example of that today in New England is Plymouth Town Hall. So what you have to do is, you effectively created your infrastructure fund when you did that. You need to continue to make deposits into that fund, strategic deposits.
Right. But that was done through the meals tax. Correct.
Correct.
Right.
But you can put other things in there.
Okay.
Okay? You can do that. You can segregate out. But you have to do it when the new business comes on. Like, I'll give you textbook examples, like the marijuana.
Yep.
Okay. All of that ended up in the general fund.
Okay.
We, it's, it's just like your retirement fund as, as an individual.
Okay.
You need to make strategic investments in that. And I can tell you right now, in the next five to 10 years, even though, I mean, easily you could have asked me about redistricting and what's currently going on with the schools and, you know, you know, a smaller student population and the potential for moving schools around or closing a school.
Right.
Gary Maesterson had a.
You have 10 seconds.
And then this is it?
Yeah. You're just about at the end of your 40 minutes.
Okay. All right. That's it. It's great to be here. Thank you.
So what would you, what would you say as far as, it's you and three other people for two spots on the Select Board.
Right. Right.
So why you?